Good evening and welcome to the July 16, 2024 City Council Regular Hybrid Meeting. I'm Mayor Saleem Neese, and this evening's hybrid City Council meeting is being brought to you in person and by Zoom. We're also broadcasting live on MITV Channel 21 and on the city's YouTube channel. Thanks for joining us tonight. Council members, please have your microphones turned on for roll call. Deputy City Clerk Deva Estrada, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Androl.
Here.
Councilmember Jacobson.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Wyker.
Here.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Here.
And Mayor Neese.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, we have a quorum present. Next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. If you've joined us in council chambers, please stand and face the flag. If you're on Zoom, please mute and turn off your video.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now move to approval of tonight's agenda. There's no questions. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Weinberg, seconded by Councilmember Reynolds. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just catching up with my help sheets here. Okay. Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Androl.
Aye.
And Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, tonight's special business is postponed. The swearing-in of the police chief and will be held at a later meeting, which brings us to City Manager Report, for which we welcome City Manager Jesse Bond.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Thank you, Casey, for the screen chair. Happy Tuesday, July 16th. All right, next slide, please. Just a quick look ahead at the schedule. As a reminder, we take August off from City Council meetings and Board and Commission meetings. So our next regular City Council meeting is Tuesday, September 3rd. We do have a couple more Board and Commission meetings this month. Arts Council will be meeting tomorrow, July 17th, and the Open Space Conservancy Trust will be meeting on Thursday. All of our meetings are posted to our website at the link below. Next slide, please. All right, a city update. Let's start with our favorite topic, the SPU water supply pipeline repair. First, let me give you an update on construction and where SPU is on work on that pipeline. They have pulled the new liner through the existing 24-inch pipe. That actually happened a couple of weeks ago, and they are reconnecting the pipe this week. After that work is all done, they'll drain the liner, they have some welding to do, and they will be anchoring everything at either end inside the pits. Once the construction is done, then we have to take another week or more for disinfection, flushing, and water sampling and testing, which we've been through before with our own water systems. So some of that can take a few days. We are still anticipating end of July, early August, for that pipeline to be back in service. Counsel, I do not have a specific date, but we are talking to SPU daily, if not twice a day or three times a day, to stay abreast of the work that's happening out on site. Although it's cut off on my screen, we do have a Let's Talk page where we're providing updates on the pipeline repair. Next slide, please. I wanted to do a quick look back on last week's call to conserve. Last Monday, we issued a community-wide call to residents and businesses to immediately conserve water because the levels in our reservoir tanks were declining. That was due to back-to-back days where our water usage on Mercer Island was far exceeding the supply that was coming in. Inside that little red circle is a look at Monday, excuse me, Sunday and Monday's water usage. And so what was happening is the reservoir tanks were declining, and we were not able to catch up. We were on a projecting to hit the fire band in 24 to 48 hours, and that's the point at which we don't have enough pressure in our water system to actively operate all of the fire hydrants. So, we think what happened, because we've been doing okay during this period of time, was just really hot weather and probably the end of the holiday weekend. I know many people came home, probably threw in some loads of laundry, filled up their kids' swimming pool, and we just had a really, really high run on water. But, the good news is, next slide, please. The next day, thank you, thank you, thank you, Mercer Island community, we turned it around immediately. Inside that red circle is Tuesday's water usage, where we had supply far exceeding usage. So in that 24 to 36-hour period there, we were able to catch up the reservoir tanks and get back to what I would call normal operations during this pipeline repair period. So, I want to say it again, we could not have done this without you, community and businesses. Everyone's response was incredible, and now we'll just continue to remind folks that the pipeline is still under repair, which means we're receiving water on a smaller backup line, and we'll need your cooperation to continue to conserve water until that pipeline is back in service. All right. I have just a handful of Capitol Project updates to share with you. The first is also water-related. Wanted to let you know that we are actually almost done, if you can believe it, with the installation of the new meters across the island. To date, we have installed 7,397 new water meters, and we have only 10 left to go as of today. So, great work. Much, much more to come. Up next is getting the customer portal up and running, and we have also the antennas that tie to this system that we're working on completing and more. We'll be rolling out a lot of information to the community over the next six to 12 months in terms of how they access information from the new meters. So, a huge thank you. I know every single home and business has been impacted by the new meter installation. We appreciate everyone's cooperation so that we could quickly get the work done over the summer, and we're almost there. All right, next slide, please. Island Crest Way, as you know, City Council, we are working on three new crosswalks at three locations. Been a lot of construction out there, and it's been busy. The timing of this work was scheduled such that we would be doing the roadway work and the crossway improvements while school was out of session. We are on track to have that work done at the end of August, just squeaking in as schools start. In the meantime, we ask for continued patience with the road closures out on Island Crest, and if you can, consider an alternate route. All right, next slide, please. The Luther Burbank Boiler Building, gosh, we are making really great progress. You can see the picture there. We're still working on seismically stabilizing that chimney. The roofing work is nearly complete. The concrete floors in the restrooms and the mezzanine are being ground and polished now. It looks amazing, and we are coming near to the finish line. We, Council would welcome you down to the site for a hard hat tour, so just reach out to me, and I'd be happy to schedule that during the August recess if you're around. All right, next slide, please. A few upcoming events. Just wanted to get on your radar. Tuesday, August 6th, we will be hosting a National Night Out event. Come meet the new chief and enjoy some cold treats at our ice cream social. I'm realizing, as I look at this slide, we don't have the location, but, oh, at the community center. There we go. It's at the very top. I missed that. So Tuesday, August 6th, here at the community center from 5:00 to 8:00. We invite the whole community to come out, meet our police department and our new police chief. We'll be pushing out more information about the event in the coming weeks. We are hosting a blood drive Monday, August 26th, also here at the community center from 10:30 to 4:30. It's noted here that from the time you come to register to the time you walk out the door with a cookie in your hand, it's just one hour. And as you know, our blood supplies regionally are quite low, so we're happy to be coordinating with the partners to make this event possible here on Mercer Island. If you'd like to come and donate blood, the link to Blood Works Northwest there is at the bottom of the slide. All right. And finally, a look ahead, and Council, make sure Casey Thompson, my assistant, gets this on your calendars if it's not there already. Sunday, September 22nd, from 5:00 to 8:00, the Mercer Island Sister Cities Association is hosting its annual soiree. We'll have more information and registration coming to you soon. They are proudly going to be hosting this event at our newest fine dining restaurant, Alister. I saw a whole bunch of equipment being delivered today, so they must be getting very close to opening. All right, next slide. Hey, wanted to take a moment to recap what was an incredible weekend. The parade, for some reason, the picture's not there. They are. The parade was a great hit. Again, I think we had more participants and a much larger crowd than last year. Over 36 groups, plus all of the city of Mercer Island rigs and staff were participating in the parade. It would not have been possible without our partners, Island Treats, Island Books, and John L. Scott, for helping to coordinate the parade and encouraging people to come out and participate. Also, a shout-out to the city of Mercer Island staff for all the work they did as well. As the parade was ending, all of those people were funneling into the main event, the daytime festivities at Mercerdale Park and in the surrounding area. We had really big crowds, 63 booths for vendors, sponsors, and our community groups, 12 food vendors, our own city booths, and of course, many of the city rigs were out for Touch a Truck. We had some new fun features, a foam party, a no-tent circus, great music, and Japanese storytelling theater. My staff tell me there were over 5,000 people that participated in the daytime event, so that was a really great turnout. Super hot, super hot. So thanks to all the volunteers and staff that made the daytime event possible. And then, we move to the evening festivities, and there's our marine patrol boats out on the lake, supporting the barge. Another just banner event, again, my staff were telling me through some very scientific measures that we had a bigger crowd this year than last year, estimating 7,000 people attended. We also used the community center parking lot as a paid parking lot and raised $6,000, which goes directly back into supporting this event. All right, and our final slide is a thank you. The event would not be possible without many, many amazing sponsors. Particularly, want to give a shout-out to the Mercer Island School District, who partners with us for transportation, and King County Search and Rescue, who was with us all day, supporting the safety needs of the event. And of course, all of the sponsors you see there on your screen. Thank you again for a great, great event.
I'll just, I'll quickly add a thank you on behalf of the council and the community to the city manager and the staff. It's amazing what the event has rebloated into and the amount of work that goes into it, I know is tremendous, but, you know, those individual contributions pull the team together, and the team produces fabulous summer event the Islanders, I think, look forward to more and more every year. So thank you for that. Our next item of business is appearances. This is an opportunity for anyone to speak to the City Council on any item, except items requiring a public hearing, any quasi-judicial matters or campaign-related matters. Tonight's agenda will include in-person public appearances and remote public appearances via Zoom. Individuals wishing to address the council may do so in person or by Zoom or telephone, provided they register with the city clerk by 4:00 PM today. When it's your turn to speak, you'll be called by name. Remarks must be addressed to the council as a whole and not to individual council or staff members. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks or who becomes boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive while addressing the city council may be requested to leave the meeting. Please speak audibly, state your name and your city of residence for the record. There'll be a timer on the screen. You'll have three minutes to speak. When your time is ended, I'll thank you for your comments and move to the next item of business, next speaker or item of business. Deputy City Clerk, please call the first speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have 15 individuals signed up for this evening, and the first three speakers. Our first one is Addie Smith, then we have Angela Bong, Jamie London. So Addie Smith, please.
Welcome.
My name is Addie Smith. Today is July 16th, 2024, and I am speaking before the Mercer Island City Council in Mercer Island, Washington. Last week, I read to this council an email from Chief Ed Holmes, sent to me on October 8th of 2019 regarding hate crime attacks on my daughter and I, and subsequently Mercer Island Police nor these city council members did anything about it, nothing. And when I defended myself from those attacks by racist whites on Mercer Island, I was the one who was arrested after having gone to the police for months, beginning in June of 2019. On July 2nd, the city council members held a presentation by Judge Jeff Gregory. And if I don't get time to finish today, I'm going to come back at the next hearing and give my response to the statements that the judge made. So, but here is what the judge stated. Quote, "At the end of the day, that all falls under the three guides, as I indicated, of an undeterred administration of justice, which includes, number one, first and foremost, accountability. What we do, okay? Whatever we change, whatever we go with, whatever we decide is more appropriate in this particular situation, or one that we are looking for in the future, it's accountability, number one. Our accountability to the city, of course. Our accountability to citizens. Our accountability to each other. Our accountability to access and administration of justice and the laws of this state." End quote. The judge stated that access and accountability to justice as the last portion of accountability, not to the justice, but to the city. The city was first, before anything else, and then to themselves, but no justice, number one, as a priority. People ought to be shocked to hear that, coming from a judge responsible for a court, that justice, period, is not the priority, but to the city and to the citizens, that comes first. So, that should be paused for concern. He also wanted to address transparency and the perception of the court and how the court has taken some hits, quote-unquote, regarding certain narratives that we are seeing out there but may not always be true. My position is if you are reading something from social media or if you are hearing something, my time is running out. I'm going to come back next week. The judge is a liar, and you all should be concerned. And these city council members know that my daughter and I were subjected to hate crimes, and two days since 2019, they've done nothing.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next individual to speak is Angela Bong, and then we have Jamie London.
Hello. Okay. Dear members of the Mercer Island City Council, my name is Angela Bong, and I am a resident of Mercer Island. I am speaking to you today to express my concern regarding the potential adoption of the IHRA Working Definition of Anti-Semitism as part of the City Council Proclamation Number 339. First of all, I want to make clear that I unequivocally condemn anti-Semitism on Mercer Island, but I believe adopting the IHRA definition may not be the best course of action for our diverse community. Anti-Semitism is a real and pressing issue that demands our attention and action. However, the IHRA definition, while well-intentioned, has been widely criticized for conflating legitimate criticism of the Israeli government with anti-Semitism, thereby stifling free speech and disproportionately impacting human rights advocates. Numerous civil liberties organizations, including the ACLU and the Center for Constitutional Rights, have documented instances where the IHRA definition has been unfortunately used to silence discourse and suppress freedom regarding human rights. As a community that I know values inclusivity and diversity, it is essential that our policies protect all residents, including our Jewish citizens and citizens of other faiths. This definition in its current form does not adequately distinguish between anti-Semitic acts and legitimate political speech, which can lead to unintended consequences such as censorship and the marginalization of other voices, including those of our own students. Instead, I urge the city council to consider adopting an alternative definition, such as the Jerusalem Declaration of Anti-Semitism, which was developed by over 350 scholars and Middle Eastern, in the fields of Holocaust history, Jewish Studies, and Middle Eastern Studies. This definition provides a more precise framework for identifying and combating anti-Semitism without impeding free speech or conflating criticism of Israel with anti-Semitism. Incorporating the JDA would align with Mercer Island's commitment to equity and social justice, ensuring that all residents feel safe and respected. It would also send a clear message that our community stands against all forms of hate and discrimination while protecting the rights of individuals to engage in open and honest dialogue. I deeply appreciate the council's efforts to address anti-Semitism and support our Jewish neighbors. However, I believe that adopting a more inclusive and precise definition will better serve our entire community, fostering a safer and more equitable environment for everyone, which I believe is the goal of everyone here. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I look forward to the council's decision on this critical matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next three individuals are Jamie London, Christine Nacano, and Ada McCall.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. My name is Jamie Lundeen. I'm a Mercer Island resident. I'm here to express my objection to the council adopting Proclamation 339 defining anti-Semitism. For the past several years, I've served on the Mercer Island School District PTA Diversity Equity Inclusion Council, the Superintendent's Equity Advisor Council, and for the last two years have served as co-VP of DEI on the Mercer Island High School PDSA. As such, in my heart, I share the city council's commitment to fostering an inclusive and respectful community for all of our residents, and it has been an honor to support and elevate the voices of marginalized students across the district and especially at Mercer Island High School. While I have served in these roles and thus see largely through the lens of student voice, I speak to you today as a private citizen. As a non-Jewish person, I come to this conversation with deep humility and respect, and would like to commend the council for addressing and denouncing anti-Semitism on Mercer Island. I know that the threat of anti-Semitism from white nationalists and neo-Nazis has been personally felt by folks in this room, and is a very real and serious problem. In fact, after gathering feedback from concerned students and community members at the end of the 2023 school year, my co-VP of DEI and I made anti-Semitism an area of focus for our work at Mercer Island High School. We had the privilege of bringing New York Times bestselling author Georgia Hunter to MIHS to collaborate with students in support of Holocaust education studies. According to students and staff, Ms. Hunter's visit was deeply impactful, not only offered an opportunity for Jewish students to feel seen and heard, but also provided a humanized story to support the concept of never again. I mention this to illustrate where my heart lies with regards to fighting anti-Semitism in our community. While I absolutely support the council's move to adopt a definition of anti-Semitism, it is this particular definition that is concerning to me. The International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance's definition conflates criticizing the actions of Israel, a government and political entity, with anti-Jewish hate, and I am worried that this conflation will be used to undermine our students and community members' ability to speak frankly about violence against Palestinians. One thing that we know for certain in connecting with student groups on campus at MIHS is that for those teens that are suffering due to the ongoing siege on Gaza, they do not feel safe speaking about their pain. They don't feel safe speaking out in support of Palestinian freedom and justice, and about the suffering and senseless killing of thousands of innocent civilians. These students believe that they will be punished if they voice their grief, anger, or legitimate condemnation of the Israeli government. I fear that adopting the IRA's definition of anti-Semitism will only further intimidate free speech, not only for these students, but for all community members on Mercer Island. With all this said, I implore the council to please consider adopting the Jerusalem Declaration of Anti-Semitism as an alternative to IRA's definition. This definition was crafted by a coalition of 350 anti-Semitism and Jewish history scholars in the Holocaust and experts in the first amendment.
Thank you. The next person to speak is Christine Nacano.
Good evening, council members. My name is Christine Nacano, and I've been a resident of Mercer Island for over 24 years. I am extremely grateful for the privilege of living in this amazing community. It has long been a place where I've felt safe, and I have enjoyed meeting neighbors from all over the world. Recently, however, I've become increasingly nervous about underlying tensions that I fear are growing. I worry that we are losing the ability to have civil discourse about items over which we disagree. And yet, I believe that our city benefits from diversity of thought, respectful dialogue, and learning from one another. This is why I too am against Proclamation Number 339 and adopting the Working Definition of Anti-Semitism as outlined by the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance. Let me be clear. I am 100% against anti-Semitism. I believe it is real, it is current, and it is horrendous. I commend you for wanting to publicly proclaim that our city will not tolerate acts of hate, violence, and discrimination against Jews, many of whom I count among my friends. Nor do I condone defacement or destruction of Jewish places of worship, learning, or community gathering. However, I do not accept all of the examples in IRA's list, listed in Exhibit A, as acts of anti-Semitism. Specifically, I do not believe that Jewish people should be conflated with the State of Israel. Political entities are distinct from human individuals and cultural institutions, and community members should be able to offer critique of Israel without fear of being accused of anti-Semitism. Prohibiting this is a violation of people's right to free speech. I'd like to ask, what is the purpose? What purpose does it serve for you to approve this particular controversial definition that has been rejected as divisive by many other groups, Jewish and non-Jewish alike? The author of the IRA definition himself has argued that the purpose of the document was for data gathering, not for creating standards against which actions would be evaluated. Rather, I implore you to table this matter, study further, and come up with a different way to publicly condemn hatred and intolerance directed toward Jewish people and institutions. I also invite you to ensure that whatever you adopt, it also protects non-Jews and particularly Palestinians, as they too deserve to live free of hate, intolerance, violence, and retribution of any kind. Let's seek to serve and esteem all of our residents and to preserve Mercer Island as a safe, friendly, and inclusive community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next three speakers are Ada McCall, Deanne Etzseksen, and G. Lester.
Hello, council members. Can everyone hear me?
Welcome, yes.
Excellent. My name is Ada McCall, and I'm a constituent of Mercer Island. I'm speaking today to oppose the use of the IHRA definition on anti-Semitism as the basis for Proclamation Number 339. I propose that the city council adopt the Jerusalem Declaration on Anti-Semitism instead. I have seen the recent rise of anti-Semitism and Islamophobia and agree that we must do something to stop it. However, the IHRA definition not only doesn't make Jewish people safer, it also directly endangers and targets Muslim, Arab, and Palestinian groups, as well as our basic rights to free speech. As UDEB Professor of Jewish Studies and former Chair of UDEB's Israel Studies Program, Leora Halper has said, "The IHRA definition of anti-Semitism is a source of deep division and controversy across and beyond Jewish communities, because, as deployed in practice, it primarily serves to police political speech about Israel while doing little to stop anti-Semitic violence." The following other organizations cite, also cite constitutional concerns with the IHRA definition. The Progressive Israel Network, the National Council of Jewish Women, The Washington Post, and the ACLU, to name a few. I support the ask to the city council to reconsider their adoption of the IHRA definition in favor of codifying the Jerusalem Declaration on Anti-Semitism. This set of 15 guidelines is an alternative definition of anti-Semitism signed by over 350 scholars of Jewish history and anti-Semitism. The guidelines are of similar strength and clarity to the IHRA definition, without the issues around conflating anti-Semitism with any political speech about Israel. issues around conflating antisemitism with any political speech about Israel. Thank you for listening and your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Deanne Etzickson.
Good evening. My name's Deanne Etzickson, and I've lived on Mercer Island for thirty-six years. Tonight, I'll focus on one key idea, that a group of extremist activists would show up to speak out against Proclamation 339 without ever talking to the mainstream Mercer Island Jewish community and with the specific intent of speaking over us to define what hatred against Jews looks like, feels like, and acts like. The alternative they promote has zero mainstream Jewish support and crucially does not address the safety concerns of Mercer Island Jews. The desire to speak against the statistical vast majority of Jewish voices on a definition of antisemitism represents the polar opposite of Mercer Island values. Those who speak out against IRA do so because their goal is not to protect Jews, but rather to protect their own ability to speak in ways we Jews experienced and define as hateful. It is a unique audacity to believe that other groups know better than we do when it comes to the simple fact of defining the hatred against which we struggle every single day. Were any other minority group to be treated this way in the face of a threat to their safety or well-being, we would call it infantilizing or even dehumanizing. I hope the council will see through this disturbing mindset and focus on passing IRA, the globally recognized, unambiguous gold standard definition of antisemitism, supported by the effective entirety of the global organized Jewish community. Ninety percent of Jews, along with every major Jewish organization and the nationally representative Jewish communal organizations of over one hundred countries, of the eleven hundred-plus local-level jurisdictions which have adopted IRA in full, Washington counts five, Tacoma, Bellevue, Mill Creek, Birmerton, and Snohomish County. As much as activist non-Jews would like to believe IRA is not controversial unless the goal is to speak over the community, which is the target of the hatred IRA defines, rather it is a vital tool that clearly illustrates how antisemitism is manifest in a variety of ways, from violence and discrimination against Jews to conspiracy theories and Holocaust denial. It offers concrete examples of antisemitism related to Israel while noting that criticism of Israel is not antisemitic. Do the right thing. Listen to actual representative Jewish voices, not outside groups who think they have a right to tell us how to experience and label hate crimes that specifically target us. Failing to pass IRA would be a failure to treat my community with the same dignity afforded to all other groups. We are counting on you to hear our cries for action and to take the uncontroversial step of passing IRA. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next three speakers are Gee Lester, Randy Kessler, and Rusty Fetterman.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can.
Hi there. My name is Gee Lester. I am a Jewish resident writing today, speaking today in opposition to Proclamation 339, which proposes to adopt the IRA working definition of antisemitism, if you're well aware at this point. I encourage you as the city council members to not adopt for the following reasons, which I will expand upon one at a time. First, as a descriptor of antisemitism and of the breadth of Jewish experiences, this definition I find to be wholly incomplete. Seven of the definitions, eleven conditions relate directly to Israel, a nation-state. It is clearly more focused on serving a political ideology rather than the material realities of Jewish people or communities living here in the diaspora. In contrast to the Jerusalem Declaration on Antisemitism, which many have spoken on, the IRA definition was written not by people who are literal subject experts, but rather by politicians and think-tank working groups in Europe. It represents, as I see it, an attempt to recuperate Europe's particular history as a leader of global racism and imperialism and reframe Europe as a benevolent place for Jewish people because it is now an unquestioning ally of Israel. The IRA definition is a particularly European phenomenon, and I don't believe it is a moral compass here in the United States. Secondly, this definition is widely contested, and adopting it is not a safe operational or political decision. You have already heard a wide range of opinions on this issue tonight. This alone should demonstrate that you are not taking a decision that would encourage the social cohesion of Mercer Island. The conversation around the IRA definition is representative of the broader contested terrain within the American Jewish community about the role of Zionism and Jewishness writ large. I don't believe it is appropriate to put any institutional support behind this definition, given that these disagreements are still playing out in real time amongst the Jewish community. Thirdly, this definition lends itself to punitive actions, most often directed toward Palestinian people, Arabs, Muslims, or other colonized peoples, speaking towards their liberation. Much like the codification of the phrase domestic terrorist has enabled police departments to arrest and prosecute activists, the label of antisemitism backed by this particular definition allows the wholesale crackdown on the wide range of anti-Zionist political expressions, including from within the Jewish community. This definition is entirely out of touch with the realities of the victims of Zionism. Under this definition, someone who lives in the United States, because their grandparents were forcibly displaced by Zionist militias during the Nakba, would be labeled antisemitic for saying they dislike the state that came into existence exclusively through their family's own disposition. Fourth, this definition represents a campaign of distraction from Israel's ongoing atrocities. We have spent today, and I'm sure you will continue to hear people speak, on a policy proposal that will materially change nothing in the lives of Jewish people. We are discussing the psychological impacts of words that are important, but rather we should be discussing the material impacts of our tax dollars, sending bombs and planes to murder Palestinians. The space given to this conversation at the expense of urgent human rights crises in Gaza and the West Bank, I believe lacks moral clarity among our community. Please, let's...
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Randy Kessler.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Randy Kessler. I'd like to first start by thanking you very much for your service to our community. I have a lifelong relationship with Mercer Island. I actually grew up in Bellevue, but I started Hebrew school here at Herzlner Tamed when I was five years old, got bar mitzvah there when I was thirteen, and I got married there when I was twenty-five. And for the last seventeen years, I've been privileged to be a Mercer Island resident, so it's really a privilege to stand here and talk with you today. I want to thank you very much for the sponsors of this initiative, for the important action to support the city's Jewish community, and to send an important message that our city is serious about tackling antisemitism. Now, you would think that having the city adopt the most widely utilized definition of antisemitism and widely adopted definition of antisemitism in the world, including the definition that's utilized by the State Department and US Department of Education and that has been endorsed by both Democratic and Republican administrations here in the United States, you'd think it would be not a controversial thing to adopt. However, as you've heard today, the entire meeting, public comment period, has been taken up with this. It is a controversial issue. However, you have to ask yourself, why would this be so difficult? Why would there be people arguing for not adopting the global standard for antisemitism definition? And the answer is because the IHRA definition makes them very uncomfortable. It calls out the way in which legitimate criticism of Israel, which by the way is not considered antisemitic under the IRA definition and specifically called out as such, that criticism of Israel similar to that made against any other nation cannot by definition be considered antisemitic. So please don't believe that this is a speech code that labels every type of criticism of Israel as antisemitic. It doesn't. But it does make people who wish to do things like conflate Israeli behavior with that of the Nazis or to call Israel a racist state by definition, when Israel is clearly not by any observable metric, that makes them very uncomfortable. That's why there's such controversy here. The people in America have the right, under the First Amendment, to say things that are hateful. And we have the right, as Americans, to label that speech to be antisemitic when it does indeed match that definition. So this definitional discussion might seem trivial, but I guarantee you that from the perspective of the Jewish community, it's extremely important, and I ask you to do the right thing, and please vote to adopt the IHRA definition as part of this resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Russell Fetterman.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity and thank you for your service to the community. My name is Russell Fetterman. I am Jewish, and this pervasive issue, antisemitism, actually personally affects me and my family and my community. I grew up on Mercer Island and have lived here most of my life. We raised our kids here. We always felt comfortable here and welcome as Jews, until recently. After the horrible massacre of October seventh, everything changed as soon as the attacks on Israel occurred. My synagogue here on Mercer Island that I grew up in, that my children were bat mitzvahed in, I found weeks after the attack vandalized with horrible graffiti, anti-Israel, and antisemitic. I had the pleasure years ago of serving as the president of the Jewish Community Center, which is one of the largest public service, non-denominational organizations in the community. This definition, the IHRA definition, is meaningful to our community. As Jews, we're entitled to have a voice, if not the voice, as to what actually constitutes discrimination and hatred targeted against us as a community, as a people, as a religion, and a group with a common ethnic and national origins. It would not be reasonable for a white supremacist to define what it means to be anti-black or anti-Asian. Those marginalized groups are best positioned to define their experience and what it means to be discriminated against. Similarly, Jews, victims of antisemitism over millennia, are best positioned to represent their experience and define what it means to them to be discriminated against. Just want to add, this definition of antisemitism IRA is not controversial among most and certainly not amongst Jews. Also, as has been noted, clearly in IRA definition, criticism of Israel does not constitute antisemitism. You may also hear from Jews who do not support IRA. They do not represent the viewpoint of the vast majority of Jews, more than ninety percent of whom globally support IRA. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have six additional speakers, Sarah Karim, Kimberly Frank, and Ray Levine.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mercer Island City Council members. It's an honor to be in front of you. My name is Sarah Karim, and I'm a voting constituent, homeowner, and resident of Mercer Island. Full disclosure that I serve as president of Lakewood Elementary's PTA and will be serving as president-elect of the Mercer Island School District's PTA Council for this coming year. I am here today, however, as a private and concerned citizen. I reference my role in the school district as I am a committed volunteer because I want to ensure belonging for all of our schoolchildren. And as part of my commitment to belonging, I also strongly believe we need to protect every human being from all types of hate. Our definitions of hate must be thought out carefully and in a way that does not create more division in our community. In this regard, I am here today to express my strong objection to the city council adopting IRA's working definition of antisemitism, and I instead strongly urge you to consider our alternative definitions of antisemitism that protects all Mercer Island residents. By way of some background, I am a practicing Muslim American of South Asian descent and going back twenty-five years have done interfaith work with practicing Jewish Americans belonging to the Orthodox, Conservative, and Reform synagogues. I have learned a lot from my Jewish siblings in the faith, including some incredible concepts about the Jewish faith, as well as about the incredible diversity of languages, ethnicities, and political viewpoints within the Jewish diaspora. I've also learned a lot about the ugly antisemitism that they have faced and continue to face in their lives, and as a result, I have fought against antisemitic comments made by individuals in many communities, including those around me. Antisemitism is unfortunately very real and very awful, and I commend the council wanting to support efforts to understand and combat it. You've received multiple issues with the definition of IRA, and I'm here today to direct you to one specific letter that I already sent to you about how multiple civil rights organizations, including the Center for Constitutional Rights and the National Lawyers Guild, have documented through examples how IRA has contributed, the definition of IRA has contributed to the censorship of expression in support of Palestinian rights and has supported the rise of anti-Palestinian racism. You will find in their January twenty twenty-four letters to the Department of Education how they have rejected it. Given these material consequences that they have documented, I will now publicly share that I am personally scared to live on Mercer Island and speak of Palestinians and of Palestine. The IRA definition does not create a safe space for discussion. It's why I thought multiple times as to whether I would be safe to submit any type of testimony, including coming here in person and speaking to you, and I'm trembling as I speak to you. It's not safe for me to speak. If you choose to adopt this specific definition, I would like for you to be aware that you're choosing to make Mercer Island less safe for me and anyone who wants to speak about Palestine or Palestinians. It does not stand, the proclamation does not stand to support a definition that has been weaponized against Palestinians, against critics of Israel, and against human rights defenders. Further, you're setting a dangerous precedent of suppression of those wanting to speak about any...
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kimberly Frank.
Mr. Mayor and members of the Mercer Island City Council, my name is Kimberly Miazawa-Frank, and I am here to express my strong objection to Proclamation number 339 defining antisemitism. I commend the council's intent to support and protect Mercer Island residents and condemn antisemitism by starting with a precise definition of the same but suggest consideration of another definition than the one proposed. The proposed definition, as provided by the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance, IHRA, has been publicly rejected by respected scholars and civil rights organizations as conflating antisemitism with legitimate criticism of Israel, thus creating more polarization, not less, and stifling legitimate legal speech of those in support of Palestinians. My family and I reside on Mercer Island. I am Japanese-American, and my husband is European-American. Together, we have three children who attend school in the district and participate in sports on the island. We have lots of friends on Mercer Island. We dine at local restaurants and shop on the island. We volunteer with nonprofits that serve Mercer Island residents. We pay taxes and we vote on Mercer Island. Our life is here on Mercer Island. In short, we are all in on Mercer Island. I share with you this detail about our cultural backgrounds in the context of Mercer Island because as a culturally mixed family, we have a unique experience here regarding our daily navigation and acceptance within the dominant white culture on the island, as well as within the Asian culture. The daily effort required and the toll it takes to adapt, or what's known as code switch in social contexts, in order to be seen, is real and is tremendous. For us, there are consequences to all of our actions, even those that would seem innocuous or benign to others. They must be premeditated in today's divisive, highly-charged environment that continues to be stoked by racially motivated, name-calling, hate-mongering, and violence. Sadly, we have learned that at times it is safer to keep our heads down, to look away, and to not make waves, as they say. For us, it's a survival strategy. You may wonder what my background and the social challenge of my family have to do with this very real and painful struggle of our Jewish and Palestinian friends and colleagues. You might even be thinking, she ain't got a dog in this fight. Having said this, please know that I mustered up the courage and chose to come before you today because I cannot stay silent. Given the shameful racial history of our country and in particular its treatment of Japanese-Americans and what happens when concerned citizens do not speak up...
Thank you.
... Thank you.
Our remaining four speakers are Ray Levine, Abby Brockman, Darren G., and Isabel Flood-Wallin.
Welcome.
Yes, hi. Can you see me now?
Sure can.
Yes, hi. Thank you. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Ray Levine. I'm here to urge the council to not adopt the IRA definition of antisemitism. I'm Jewish. Antisemitism is personal to me. My grandparents immigrated to the US in the early nineteen hundreds, fleeing discrimination and violence. I lost family members in the Holocaust and have visited mass graves in their villages. So I appreciate the council's intent to oppose antisemitism. However, the IRA adds nothing to protect Jews. It incorrectly and dangerously conflates legitimate criticism of the Israeli government with antisemitism for the purpose of silencing advocates for Palestinian... for the purpose of silencing advocates for Palestinian rights. This turns antisemitism into a weapon against free speech rather than a tool to identify anti-Jewish discrimination. And we are seeing this conflation promoted by IRA used to fire people from their jobs and suspend students who criticize Israel's genocidal war on Gaza. I hope that you are aware that there is broad opposition to the adoption of the IRA definition within and beyond Jewish communities. It is opposed by many Jews, scholars of antisemitism and Jewish history, and civil liberties organizations. For example, University of Washington Jewish Studies Professor Leora Halpern wrote in the Seattle Times in January 2023, "I hope that the Metropolitan King County Council understands that the IRA definition is not a consensus position, and that even including it in something as symbolic as a proclamation sets a dangerous precedent for future legislation." Last year, King County Council took up a proclamation similar to the one that you are considering. Hundreds of King County Jews wrote emails opposing inclusion of the IRA definition, and many of us attended multiple council meetings to explain our objections. The council listened, and some council members were inspired to learn more about the issues, resulting in the council's adoption of a proclamation condemning antisemitism that does not adopt the IRA definition. I urge you to pay attention, serious attention, to the concerns raised and not put Mercer Island City Council on record supporting a definition that threatens our very right to free speech. What we need in these times is to recognize that safety for Jews is connected to safety for all. We need to oppose antisemitism as part of a commitment to fighting all forms of prejudice, discrimination, and oppression, and create equity and social justice for all on Mercer Island and everywhere. Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Abby Brockman.
Hello, council members. My name is Abby Brockman, and I'm a Jewish chaplain who attended Northwest Yeshiva High School on the island, the JCC here for many years, and now work as a Jewish chaplain. And I'm speaking to you today as a Jewish person, asking you to not adopt the IRA definition on antisemitism in proclamation three-three-nine. While antisemitism deserves our consideration, this definition is the wrong way to fight it because it doesn't make Jewish people safer, while it does endanger many Muslims, Arabs, and Palestinians, as well as other advocates for human rights. Why doesn't it make us safer? First, because it distracts us from the real source of anti-Jewish rhetoric and violence by conflating Judaism, a religion, with Israel, a nation-state, and Zionism, a political ideology. These are entirely different categories, and it's why there are many Jews like myself who are marginalized and silenced by many Jews in our community with a pro-Israel political agenda, who feel deeply connected to our religion while also being critical of the state of Israel and ideology of Zionism. But by falsely conflating them, it also conflates the inverse. Criticism of Israel and Zionism becomes synonymous with antisemitism. This puts the focus of fighting antisemitism on those simply exercising their right to free speech by offering legitimate criticism of the Israeli government instead of where it needs to be, on white supremacists and white nationalism, which is the real source of anti-Jewish rhetoric and violence. It therefore prevents us from understanding the true nature of antisemitism, its root causes, how it manifests, where it presents, and what to do about it. It also doesn't make us safer because it inflates the perception of antisemitism in our society, which triggers Jewish trauma and makes us feel less safe than we actually are. At the same time that it fails to protect Jews, it also directly promotes anti-Palestinian racism and endangers Muslims, Arabs, and Palestinians, and all those who care about Palestinian human rights. They are terrified to speak up, even though they are supposed to have rights to free speech. It does this by dehumanizing them, by promoting a false narrative that they are criticizing Israel out of some intrinsic anti-Jewish hatred they hold in their hearts, instead of due to their opposition to occupiers and oppressors, irregardless of the personal religion of these actors. And their fear is not theoretical because we have seen the real consequences, being unfairly suspended, fired, and even arrested for advocacy work. So while Jews talk about wanting to define antisemitism for themselves, which might be problematic, please listen to these voices, at least similarly of these groups, who are telling you that this endangers them and not Jews telling you that it doesn't endanger them. For all of these reasons, the IRA definition is incredibly controversial, even within the Jewish community, as even the briefest research will clearly and overwhelmingly show, and I strong you urgently to not rely on it in this proclamation. Make no mistake, the true aim of this definition is not to make Jews safer, but rather to suppress Palestinian advocacy. If you want to make Jews safer, please find a way to do it that does not infringe on speech, on free speech, or come at the expense of another group of people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Darren G., and then Isabel Flood-Wallin.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Darren Gold. I live in Mercer Island. I just wanted to quickly thank you for taking this up, and I ask that you pass the IRA definition. There's really nothing I can add that you guys don't already know, so I'm not going to do that. The one thing I want to mention is something I heard in one of the speakers tonight. That speaker talked about antisemitism and then mentioned white supremacy, and I think it was Nazis, but it was another white group. That speaker is a leader, I guess, in our schools. And when I hear that and that leader unwilling to describe non-white antisemitism, it makes me question whether I belong in Mercer Island. It raises me question whether I belong in the schools. I've already taken two of my children out of the Mercer Island schools, and I'm wiring up to taking out my third. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Isabel Flood-Wallin.
Hello, I am Isabella, a constituent of Mercer Island. I am speaking today to voice my concern about the proposed definition of antisemitism by the IHRA. As someone who grew up on Mercer Island, I have had the privilege of growing up alongside a thriving Jewish community, and I am deeply committed to ensuring that no one in that community experiences hate, discrimination, or violence of any kind. At the same time, I have seen that Mercer Island has not always listened to voices of other oppressed communities. I am worried that the proposed definition of antisemitism could inadvertently make those communities especially, especially vulnerable to discrimination, violence, and hate. The definition discourages, discourages open discussion of important political subjects and suppresses the voices of the already oppressed. As someone who is a part of the Mercer Island community, I believe it's my responsibility to ensure that none of my neighbors experience consequences of discrimination. I hope that the city council considers exploring other definitions, such as the Jewish Islam Declaration, which also includes concern for the rising Islamophobia and anti-Arab slash Palestinian hate that has been prevalent. It is crucial that the city council listens to all voices and ensures that they are protecting freedom of speech without infringing on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we do have one more request to speak. The gentleman in the, in the room. Thank you.
Hello, thank you. My name is Mohammed Ovidat. I am a resident of Mercer Island. We've been on the island since 2008. I am Muslim and I am Palestinian. Myself, my family, we have many of our Jewish friends in the community who we share our experiences and love. I am also concerned about the many hate crimes we see. Antisemitism is real, on the rise. Islamophobia is real, on the rise. You probably heard, last November, a six-year-old Muslim child was stabbed twenty-six times by his landlord because he's Muslim. In March or January of this year, a friend of our family who was a student at Brown, studying mathematics, along with two of his friends, was shot by a racist because he's Palestinian wearing the kufi. I grew up in Hebron. My mother was born in Jerusalem. They lost their home in nineteen forty-eight and moved to Hebron. Then subsequently, we were occupied. I was born under occupation and left after graduating high school to the United States, living under occupation. So I have reservations about the current form of the state of Israel. I have been a strong advocate of a two-state solution that allows Palestinians and Israelis to live side by side as they should. I think adopting such proclamation is dangerous. I think suppressing our ability to speak about a serious issue. When you hear the current Israeli government, when you hear Ben Vier, Smotrich, saying Palestinians don't exist before October 7th, that is concerning. If you adopt this resolution, you're squashing our ability to express ourselves. You're squashing the ability to have a dialogue among peace-loving people who really want to resolve this issue and have everybody live together in peace. I'm a member of Mercer Island. I take a lot of people here. We have a lot of friends. A lot of members of Jewish communities, friends of ours, of our kids. I can't define, you know, what, I can't state the definition of antisemitism. I have not been through that horrible experience that our Jewish brothers and sisters had to endure. So someone else can define, but the inclusion of Israel and, and conflation of Israel in its current state and behavior with antisemitism is very disturbing, and I think it will be a detriment to having a dialogue to establish long-lasting peace between Palestinians and Israelis, between Muslims and Jews. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. That concludes our public comment. The next item of business is the Consent Agenda, which contains AB 6411, June 28, 2024 payroll certification. Certification of claims for June 28 and July 5, 2024. City Council regular hybrid meeting minutes of July 2, 2024. AB 6512, 2024 asbestos cement AC water main replacement bid award. AB 6513, Eightieth Avenue Southeast pedestrian improvements bid award. AB 6504 sewer pump station generator replacement bid award. AB 6506 Kroger, Kroger Company opioid settlement. AB 6516 MICC Room 104 Hybrid Meeting Capability Upgrade. AB 6517 Public Works Building Seismic Repairs. And AB 6518 Disability Pride Month Proclamation Number 340. Counsel, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Reynolds, seconded by Councilmember Weinberg. Deputy City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilmember Andorall.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
And Councilmember Jacobson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. I, I was not actually the one who moved it. I believe it was Councilmember Weinberg. I don't recall. I was silent.
Okay. Did I say Jacobson, Weinberg?
I seconded it.
I, you said Reynolds and then Weinberg.
Okay, so you're, you're the second?
I, I tried.
I think I heard Councilmember Jacobson's voice first. I think he moved it and I seconded it.
Okay.
I had my mic on.
For, for the record, I would have been happy to move it. I just didn't at this time.
Thank you. All right. City Clerk, are we squared away on that?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Very good. Our first item of regular business is AB 6515, Definition of Antisemitism and Proclamation Number 339. Counsel, this is an item that's been brought forward by Councilmember Jacobson, added to tonight's agenda for discussion and approval, or a vote. And so I will turn it over to you.
I have, for some considerable period of time, considered the idea of antisemitism proclamation, and I've reviewed not only the IHRA, but the Jerusalem and a number of other things that other cities have done here. And I would, nothing is perfect in this world, and none of those things are perfect. However, I do believe that the, what's proposed as the proclamation three-three-nine is the best vehicle available to us to be on record about antisemitism. I, there are those who think that I'm Jewish because there are many Jews whose name is Jacobson. I'm just a dumb old Swede, so you stick, have to stick the pins in a different doll. But I had the good fortune of growing up with a wide number of people. My best friends and playmates were Chinese, Japanese, Black, Mexican, all, all kinds of things in a, in a small California city and, and including a number of Jewish people. And I, I didn't, I never drew lines between these. They were just my friends. And if they weren't, if they didn't want to play with me, or they wanted to steal my bike, they weren't my friends. But putting all that aside, this antisemitism is a serious problem, and it's something that I think we have as a city to stand on record. Three years or so ago, we passed proclamation of some sort that attempted to deal with this. And at the time, I said, well, why do we just limit it? Why don't we just do, go across the board and say that we're against every form of prejudice and every form of discrimination? And that's my base belief. And at that point in time, we didn't do that, although we followed up with a number of other proclamations. I do not believe that, that the proposed three-three-nine conflates or prohibits people from criticizing the government of Israel. And I have studied it carefully and I've come to that conclusion. I think it's the best thing available, and by taking a look at the number of entities and organizations which have adopted this, I think is telling in terms of its pervasiveness. And so for those reasons, I'm the one who's proposed this, and Mr. Mayor, I'm prepared to move to adopt it at the appropriate time.
Okay. Well, you know I like a motion on the floor, so I'll let you put a motion on the floor.
I move that we adopt AB 6515 to approve proclamation three-three-nine defining antisemitism.
Okay. Is your second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Weinberg. Do you want to speak to the second?
Well, I actually have a minor amendment I'd like to propose as well.
Okay. City Clerk, do you have the motion? It was moved by Councilmember Jacobson, seconded by Councilmember Weinberg. And a potential amendment.
So I move that we amend on page three of Agenda Bill 6515, the last line above of the, of the proclamation, right above the signature line, to end with the year 2024 instead of 2023.
Okay. I will second that amendment. Counsel, are there any questions on the amendment? All right. Deputy City Clerk, please call the roll.
The first roll we'll take is on the amendment. Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Councilmember Andorall.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson.
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
And Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Okay. Amendment passes. We're back to the amended motion on the floor. All right. Counsel, any other discussion? Councilmember Reynolds.
I'd like to start by thanking everybody for their passionate and thoughtful presentations tonight. It was deeply touching and helpful to hear all the perspectives that we had tonight on, on all sides of this issue. I, I also want to note that I'm unalterably opposed to antisemitism, racism, and other forms of hate. These things have no place in our community or our country. In recent years, I want to acknowledge we've had many clearly antisemitic incidents of vandalism and language on the island. These are completely unacceptable and should not be tolerated. On June 10, 2020, the council issued a proclamation that stated that, quote, "conduct that inflicts emotional, mental, or physical harm against individuals because of their race, ethnicity, place of origin, physical ability, socioeconomic status, gender identity, sexual orientation, age, or religion has no place in our community and country," close quote. I supported this proclamation, and I absolutely agree with it. Today, we're put to a test to walk the talk and support another proclamation that attempts to address antisemitism, a specific form of harm that has no place in our community and country. I recognize this is a delicate and important issue to islanders of all backgrounds, national origins, and faiths, and we've seen a good example of this tonight already. I also know that in this political climate, many islanders, Jews, Christians, Muslims, and others have told me how they feel unsafe in this community and unable to express their feelings on issues related to events in the Middle East. This is a tragedy. So we must move forward carefully. I share the views of many in our community that antisemitism must be condemned. But I also read the IHRA definition of antisemitism and see at least two examples in this definition that, in my view, conflate opposing antisemitism with opposing policies or actions of the Israeli government. We've received a number of letters on this topic. Many who support the IHRA definition have included this statement or a variation on it, quote, "The definition clearly states that criticism of Israel similar to that levied against any other country cannot be regarded as anti-Semitic." I'd like to take comfort in this statement, but I can't for two reasons. First, it's directly contradicted by at least two examples of antisemitism within the IRA document, rendering the clarification confusing at best and potentially misleading. But perhaps more important, and I'll be offering an amendment related to this later, this portion of the definition is not included in the Mercer Island Agenda Bill that documents the definition we are adopting. To be clear, the original IRA definition and the Mercer Island Agenda Bill are, say, different things, and what people have been frequently quoting in dozens of letters to the council as justification for accepting the proclamation is not part of the Mercer Island Agenda Bill. So at this point, I would like to move to amend the motion to insert at the beginning of the definition the missing text from the IRA definition. And I'm going to read this off, and I can also email it to the council if you like. Quote, "To guide IRA in its work, the following examples may serve as illustrations. Manifestations might include the targeting of the State of Israel conceived as a Jewish collectivity," period. However, criticism of Israel similar to that levied against any other country cannot be regarded as antisemitic. Antisemitism frequently charges Jews with conspiring to harm humanity, and it is often used to blame Jews for, quote, "why things go wrong," close quote. It is expressed in speech, writing, visual forms of action, and employs sinister stereotypes and negative character traits," close quote. And so for avoidance of doubt, and Mr. Strata, let me know if you want me to read this back, this is language from the initial, from the original IRA definition, and all I'm asking is that it be, at this time, is that this be included in the Mercer Island definition that purports to be a representation of the IRA definition but leaves out these important words.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Seconded by Councilmember Wyker, moved by Councilmember Reynolds. The insertion of the language that you quoted is at what point in this proclamation?
I believe it'd be in the beginning part of Exhibit 1 to the proclamation, at the very beginning of that.
So in after, in the quote that is emboldened on the now-there-for section? Are you saying it is within those quotations that this text is to occur?
It's on, excuse me, I said Exhibit 1, I meant Exhibit A. That Exhibit A begins the word.
So you want it on the B side of the proclamation?
Yes. And that Exhibit A begins with the words contemporary examples.
Okay.
That paragraph is taken from the IHRA definition, but the paragraph within the definition that comes before that, that I quoted, is missing, so I'm proposing to add it to the beginning of this definition.
Okay. Have you emailed that to the City Clerk?
I will certainly do that right now.
Okay. Do you want to speak to the second?
Yeah, I just, I've done a lot of reading and a lot of talking to my Jewish friends and family members and my Palestinian friends and family members, and this is a very heartbreaking situation that we have on the global stage and here at home. I just, I would like to think we have an inclusive community. I know that's a work in progress on many fronts for many communities and many ethnicities and many cultural groups. And this attempt tonight is my support to try to address my Jewish friends and family who have felt antisemitism and who have felt afraid. And if there are more proclamations coming, please send them our way and let's talk about that. But tonight, I want to stand with my Jewish friends and family who really feel that this is an important stand to take at this moment in time in our community on this global stage. So I'm going to support this, and I appreciate Councilmember Reynolds for bringing that clarification forward, because this is by no means an effort or support by me of suppressing voices of our Muslim and Palestinian family members and community members. And let's please keep the dialogue open. It's the only way we can come together as Mercer Islanders, as Washingtonians, as Americans, as global citizens in the world. We have to have to figure out how to get our language right and come together to support peace and anti-racism in all its forms.
Thank you. City Clerk, can you put the text as the amendment would reflect in the B side on the screen? Is that possible?
Clarification, is this text to go before the definition that's blue on the actual proclamation?
In the actual proclamation, the text that is in, this follows the text that is in blue, and I think there may be a little bit of additional text also after that that is, but I've kind of lost track, to be honest with you. But this will, if you put it in right before the word contemporary, it will be in the same place that it is in the original working definition.
I'll share. I just want to make sure I get this in the right spot. So let me, let me share it, and you can tell me.
That is not the correct place. It should be, oh, maybe it's equivalent, but I believe it belongs on the top of the next page, right before the word contemporary. For the record, I'm not trying to pull a fast one on anybody that says it's a direct cut-and-paste from, or copy-and-paste from the Holocaust Remembrance website.
Ellie, can you underline that new text just while we're discussing? Thank you.
Can you change the last approved amended motion, which is the 2024 on the A side of the pro? Thanks. Okay. Is there any other discussion by counsel before, Councilmember Andorall?
Well, I just wanted to thank Councilmember Reynolds for this amendment. My eyes aren't as good as they once were, but I think it's one that I can support because I was worried about the dozens and dozens and dozens of emails that we received that said criticism of the State of Israel is not considered antisemitic. I'm like, well, where is this in this two-page document? So I do think it is important, and I would not intend to silence any voices, and, you know, political speech may be distasteful, but it is certainly not something I'm wanting to quash. So I do appreciate this amendment, and I think I'm going to be in support of the entire proclamation at this point, but.
Okay. Thank you for that. Counsel, any other discussion before I call the roll on the amendment? Deputy City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Andorall.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
And Councilmember Jacobson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Amendment to the motion passes. The amended motion is now back on the floor. Are there any more amendments? Councilmember Reynolds.
Yes. I would move to delete the phrase on the Exhibit A, e.g., by claiming that the existence of a State of Israel is a racist endeavor.
Can you draw my eye to the location of that in the text?
If you can give me one moment.
It's the fifth bullet point up.
The one that begins with denying the Jewish people the right to self-determination. It's the, what comes after the comma on that, yes. So I'm proposing to delete everything after the comma on that bullet point.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm surprised that's not in parentheses. Seconded by Councilmember Wyker? All right. So it's moved by Councilmember Reynolds, seconded by Councilmember Wyker.
May I speak to motion?
You can.
Okay. Thank you. We heard from a lot of speakers tonight that the IRA document conflates criticism of Israel or the State of Israel or its policies or actions with antisemitism, and this is one of my key concerns. And I think there are two key examples in this document where that happens, that this is one of them. I'll be, and I would like very much for the council to be on record as very much opposing antisemitism, but it does not seem appropriate or necessary for me for the council to attempt to codify the idea that criticism of policies or actions of the State of Israel are antisemitic. And I believe this language, at least arguably, does that, and as such, I'm proposing that we eliminate this language.
Okay. Counsel, any other discussion? Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Yeah, I'm opposed to this amendment. I'm struggling to understand a little bit here. The deleting this language would seem to be in some way endorsing the idea that the State of Israel is a racist endeavor. And I just don't feel comfortable with that. I think that those claims are often made and are unfounded in a state where 20% of the population are Muslim. I just can't, I can't let this amendment go by without comment.
Okay. Councilmember Reynolds.
I want to be very clear here that I'm not making an allegation that the State of Israel is racist or is a racist endeavor. Merely, I am merely making the point that in a country that advocates for free speech as we do, I think all citizens, all residents, all of us should feel free to be able to criticize another country, another government, our own country, our own government, for any reason that they feel is appropriate, and not have fear of being accused of antisemitic or other similar sorts of attitudes. Whether that is or is not a fair criticism of the State of Israel is not relevant. What is relevant is an attempt to criticize such criticism as antisemitic.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
I think that the language that, on your last amendment, I think covered a lot of this, where it was very clear that criticism of the State of Israel is, should be held at the same standard as the criticism of any other country. I think, I think your point is covered in that language.
Councilmember Reynolds.
I acknowledge that the amendment that I offered first is helpful in this vein, in that it added some very important language, but it also is somewhat contradicted, in my view, by this language, and I think having pieces of the document that contradict each other is unfortunate and confusing and misleading.
Okay. City Counsel, any other discussion? Deputy City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Jacobson.
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
No.
And Councilmember Andorall.
No.
Okay. Amendment to the motion fails. Do you have any more amendments? Councilmember Reynolds.
One more, yes. I would like to move to strike the second to the last bullet on the IRA Appendix A that states that drawing comparisons of contemporary Israeli policy to that of the Nazis, I would move to strike that language.
Okay. Is there a second on that one? There's no second. So it fails for a second. Back to the amended motion on the floor. Counsel, are there any other amendments? Any other discussion? Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone for coming out here tonight, and also the 100 emails or so we've received in the last 24 hours. It was, I felt like my phone was buzzing at any given moment. You know, thinking about how I talked about this tonight, I really struggled. I thought about talking about some of the recent acts of antisemitism I've seen and have been victimized by, and then I realized that that would be a very long conversation. But I just want to share a couple, because I think that this has become, I heard a lot tonight, and I've been frustrated to hear what folks think will make Jews safe and what won't, especially what won't. In the last few years, I've had a lot of instances with antisemitism, I would say from the far right to the far left, including sitting about 40 feet from a neo-Nazi, a self-proclaimed neo-Nazi, who threatened to burn down my house with a Molotov cocktail because of my family's work to combat extremism. That was very challenging. It was very terrifying. It continues to terrify me. More recently, I was caught coming home from a three-year-old's birthday party in I-5 as protesters took over I-5. As they approached my car, I immediately got concerned about what would happen if they opened the door and found out I was Jewish. My son, who is three, what would happen to him? I have been approached by many members of the community asking what the city can do in this effort, and I think that passing this tonight is one thing that we can do. This puts us in line with over 30 states, 1,200 cities, three different U.S. administrations, including, you know, I would say the last three. So I would, I'm very concerned about and cognizant of what folks have said tonight, and I think that this is obviously an ongoing conversation, and we're not going to solve anything here tonight, but I do think that this is a step forward, and I encourage my colleagues to support it.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Weinberg.
So many people have expressed both support for and opposition to this definition of antisemitism, and I think we've done some thoughtful adjustments to it in response. That said, I want to point out that no individual has come forth in defense of antisemitism itself. And while no definition of antisemitism is perfect, it's important to keep the bigger picture in mind here, which is that Mercer Islanders are united in keeping our community safe and free from discrimination and prejudice of all kinds, including antisemitism. Mercer Islanders are united in fostering an inclusive and respectful community where everyone belongs, and Mercer Islanders are united in our defense of our freedom of speech. I wholeheartedly support this motion, encourage my colleagues to vote in favor of it as well, and going forward, I encourage the members of the community to focus on the many values that unite us and not the few that divide us.
Thank you. All right. Not seeing any, Councilmember Jacobson.
I'd like to thank Councilmember Reynolds, because I think his, the two amendments, excuse me, or the one amendment we've adopted, I think goes some distance to meet the conflation problems that people have. I would also like to say that, having read every one of the numerous emails that I have, I share my colleague Ted Weinberg's belief that there is a strong feeling that antisemitism isn't the way, isn't what we do in this community, and we all will do it, go about not being antisemitic in different ways, but it's a commitment that I certainly have, and I can see in this room and in the emails that we got numerous on the subject. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Reynolds.
I think Councilmember Weinberg made a very valid point that, you know, nobody here is in favor of antisemitism. I'm very grateful to hear that so far. I also want to acknowledge the deeply upsetting commentary by my friend and colleague, the Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum. What he had to go through was completely and absolutely unacceptable. There is no doubt about that. What I continue to struggle with is that this proclamation may make some Jewish people on the island feel safer, and we have to take their word for it. Those who have spoken up in this, they say it was. Those who have spoken up in this, they say it will make them feel safer. I'm very glad that it will have that effect. I want everyone to be safe and welcome on this island. I'll be opposing this motion. Probably that's no surprise to anybody in this room. And the reason I'll be opposing it is not because I'm in favor of antisemitism, not because I think it doesn't matter, but rather because I want everyone to feel safe and welcome on this island. And there is too much going on in the Middle East and too much going on in this country, on our campuses and elsewhere, where those who have spoken up against some of the actions taking place in the Middle East right now have felt silenced, have felt unsafe, have felt threatened, in some cases have been expelled from school, lost jobs, et cetera. This proclamation has no impact on how those people are treated. We can't stop that from happening. But I think in some ways, it gives those who would attempt to punish people for speaking their, for using their voice to express their concerns about the Israeli government's policies or actions, I think it's giving ammunition to those who want to silence that voice and stifling civic discourse. And to me, that's a tragedy as well. And it's a tragedy that is not necessary. There are alternate definitions that are around. At the beginning of this process, I was made aware of the Jerusalem Declaration, which many people spoke of. I've read that, and it seems to me to have all of the same advantages that the initial document has, without any of the disadvantages. I had come in here tonight intending to propose an amendment to adopt that one instead. I won't be doing that, because it's very clear it would not succeed, and I don't want to waste the council's time. But I wish we'd gone that way, because I think it's possible to increase the safety of everyone on the island. And I think we failed in that effort tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I just, real quick. Like I said, I don't think we're going to solve any of this tonight. But I don't think we can go without mentioning what we have seen at campuses, what we've seen around places in the world. If you look at what is contained in this document, there are examples of this so close to home. And I just, as you go not very far from here, there were people that were prohibiting people from moving around a public university because they felt they were Jewish. And I fully appreciate what Councilman Reynolds has said, but I just cannot let a comment like that go without offering a little more color.
Okay. Well, Counsel, I want to thank you for the work on this. Councilmember Jacobson, I want to thank you for bringing it forward. And the rest of the council, thank you for the amendments on it. I want to thank the public for all of the feedback, the public testimony, the passion, the emails. We received over 100 emails. Since, you know, the attacks in Israel, we have spoken out with a joint statement. We've had a proclamation. Every proclamation is included, additional language about making sure that the community is safe and that this is not a place that we endorse or support or don't speak up against hate when we see it. And if we use the phrase commonly among any issue, antisemitism included, if you see something, say something. You need to be able to know when you see it. And this goes a long way to describing to the community, to our Jewish neighbors, that we've been thoughtful about defining the antisemitism, allowing the community to have a pillar to lean on, to know when they see it. One that is congruent, I'll add, with the school district. The school district has adopted the exact language that we're adopting tonight, I guess minus maybe one amendment. And so we'll continue to support our Jewish neighbors and friends, as well as the full community. And so I want everybody to know that I'm supporting this, because this is a continuum of the work that we've been doing since October 7. And it's work that we'll continue to do. When we see something, we'll say something. So, Deputy Seve Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the vote on the main motion. Deputy Mayor, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell.
Aye.
Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye. A nay, sorry.
And Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion passes. Counsel, the time, 6:34. Is everybody good with a 10-minute recess? Okay. Counsel will be in recess for 10 minutes.
Welcome back to the City Council meeting. The council was in recess from six thirty-four to six forty-nine. Our next item of regular business is AB sixty-five-ten, the twenty-two comprehensive plan periodic update presentation of planning commission recommended recommended draft. We welcome CPD Director Jeff Thomas, also joining us tonight is Senior Planner Adam Zack and Planning Commission Chair Angela Betazo. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. For the record, Jeff Thomas with CPD. Angie, our Planning Commission Chair has just popped on the screen and Adam will hear momentarily as well. Before we get going with tonight's presentation, I'd like to just make a few opening remarks. Tonight represents the handoff of the Planning Commission recommendation on the twenty-two comprehensive plan periodic update, work that the Planning Commission wrapped up on June twelfth. And the Planning Commission's recommendation signed by the chair is included as Exhibit One in your packet to Agenda Bill sixty-five-ten. Also included in your packet with Exhibit One are two different versions of the actual comprehensive plan, draft comprehensive plan that the Planning Commission is presenting to you, the City Council. One version is a clean version, which represents the most up-to-date work that's been done in clean copy, so it's easy to read. The second version is a strike-through version, and what that version represents is essentially our twenty-sixteen comprehensive plan and all the changes that the Planning Commission worked on over the period of a better part of two years and took to public hearing there at the end of May and deliberated on and ultimately voted to recommend to the City Council on June twelfth. So, two different versions of the same document. I would like to also point out quickly footnote to the strike-through version. Not every element or every chapter, per se, in the comprehensive plan is in strike-through version because we have two new elements that don't exist in the twenty-sixteen comprehensive plan. That's the economic development and the parks and recreation elements. And then the housing element, there is a housing element in the twenty-sixteen version of the comprehensive plan. However, that version is proposed to be completely repealed and replaced with a new housing element. And so, the new housing element is in both versions in your packet here tonight. Tonight's focus is going to be, ideally, will be just strictly on the Planning Commission recommendation. We have the chair here this evening joining us and presenting the recommendation to you, the City Council, and then between Adam and Angie and I doing our best to answer any questions that you may have on the Planning Commission recommendation. We are going to have time, starting in September, to have proposed amendments by Council. We'll talk about that a little later at the end of the presentation here this evening. But September third is the start of the Council's deliberations to work towards adoption of the twenty-two comprehensive plan. So, we're not having deliberations here tonight or any motions to make amendments here this evening, simply to present the Planning Commission recommendation to you this evening and hopefully be able to answer any questions that you may have. The last thing I will say really quick before I turn it over to Angie is the Agenda Bill does indicate no action is requested tonight. I do believe in working with the mayor and deputy mayor in preparation for the meeting tonight, the mayor, we may be asking for a motion for the Council to confirm the schedule to send proposed amendments to staff over a rolling three-week period. So, that will come here at the end of the presentation and we'll discuss that a little bit more when we get to it. So, with that, Angie, I'd like to give you the hot mic and I think you've got some comments on the process and so forth that you'd like to make to the Council, so take it away.
Thanks, Jeff. Good evening, everyone. My name is Angie Betazo and I serve as the Chair of the Planning Commission. I'm here this evening to give you just a quick briefing on the process the Planning Commission undertook to help city staff develop the draft comprehensive plan update presented at tonight's meeting. City Council voted in March of twenty-twenty-two to advance a work plan to engage a full review and revision of our comprehensive plan, and the Planning Commission voted in June of twenty-four to refer the current draft to the City Council for consideration. In the twenty-six months since City Council approved the work plan for this effort, the Planning Commission has convened thirty times to review and discuss plan elements, thirty times. Each of those thirty occasions had an opportunity for public comment on the business before the Commission, and of the thirty meetings, twelve occasions included live public comment. The City of Mercer Island has maintained a website disclosing comprehensive plan updates, a thorough library of draft elements, presentations and comments, and has provided what is, I would say effectively, a twenty-four-seven information availability and comment platform for the public to engage with. Planning Commissioners often received emails from members of the public who've reviewed the work online and provided feedback or comments at their convenience. During the comprehensive plan review, Commissioners reviewed no fewer than two drafts of each of the seven plan elements, and in some cases, elements were reviewed a third or fourth time, so there's been a lot of review of the elements in front of you. Most Planning Commissioners attended the May first comprehensive plan open house and reviewed the comments submitted at the open house, as well as responses submitted for the various surveys the city presented, including economic development and multifamily housing topics. Three of the five current Planning Commissioners have participated in the comp plan update process since the beginning of the twenty-six months, which really lends itself to continuity of process and historic knowledge within the Commission itself, and at least four Commissioners participated in the majority of the process. If you've kept up with Planning Commission deliberations, you've observed active and public debate by Commissioners about how to address comments received on the draft comprehensive plan, and you'll undoubtedly have the information you need to understand what public comments we voted to address and what comments we opted not to address. The conversations within Planning Commission deliberations really do give you context and reasons for our actions. As your newest Planning Commissioner and the newest of three Commission Chairs who've served during this process, I can say with confidence that the draft before you today has been prepared while undergoing near constant opportunity for public involvement and regular debate and discussion by the Planning Commission in an open public forum that can be reviewed at every step by accessing notes and videos online. It's because of these qualities, I believe, the draft comprehensive plan has undergone a rigorous, transparent and accessible public process. And with that, I'd like to hand it over to Adam Zack to review the particulars with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Angie. I have a couple of slides to go through tonight, so let me share my screen. Okay, so, so our purpose tonight, as Jeff and Angie highlighted, is to present the Planning Commission's recommended draft of our comprehensive plan periodic review, and also to outline the process for the City Council to comment on that recommended draft, to move us forward to get to deliberations and eventually working towards adoption of the comp plan update. Tonight, the presentation, I'll start with a background and project history of the comprehensive plan update, and then walk you through the different elements of the plan that are proposed for update, touch on the agency comments that we've received and that we're expecting, and then walk through those next steps. So, we'll take, we'll keep a pretty high level here tonight. First, the comprehensive plan periodic review is a process that's required by the state law under the Growth Management Act in Washington, and that, the GMA, the Growth Management Act, requires cities and counties to update their comprehensive plans currently every ten years. Cities in King County are required to complete their periodic review by December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four, and the purpose of that review is to update the plan's twenty-year planning horizon. So, this, this round of updates will extend the plan's planning horizon from twenty-twenty-four to twenty-forty-four. The other key piece of this comprehensive plan update is to update our plan to reflect changes in those GMA statewide requirements. And for this update cycle, that's, there's a particular focus on housing. The legislature has adopted several bills in the last few years that affect housing, as I'm sure the City Council is aware of. There's, it's been rapidly developing those requirements for housing, so we're addressing those with this update. Looking back at the process, I know there's a lot of text here, I'll try not to get too bogged down here, but looking back at the processes, Chair Betazo mentioned, the, this process began in twenty-twenty-two when the City Council adopted the, the scope of work for this project, the public participation plan and the master scheduling. And that scope of work really kind of envisioned this very focused, you know, surgical update of the comprehensive plan, and we've tried to stick to that as much as we can. There's been some changes, as I mentioned, regarding housing, we'll touch on that in a minute here. One of the, one of the key pieces of this update was drafting a new economic development element. This is an element that doesn't currently exist in the comprehensive plan, and so that, that drafting process included some additional steps, as we'll see as we work through this. The most important piece of that drafting process was convening an economic development work group, which was a joint subcommittee of the City Council and the Planning Commission to prepare that initial draft of the housing, sorry, the economic development element. We did the same thing, we had a, a housing work group for the housing element that was a joint subcommittee of the City Council and the Planning Commission to draft that housing element. And so, the economic development work groups' work really began in the, in the summer of twenty-two, began, they began looking at the public input we were getting and preparing their initial policy direction for that element. At the same time, through the summer and fall of twenty-two, the Planning Commission considered the land use and transportation elements, working towards preparing a public hearing draft. And then at the same, and then in the late autumn of twenty-twenty-two into the winter of twenty-three, some technical documents, the economic analysis, housing needs assessment, those were presented to the City Council and Planning Commission to form some of the baseline, the basis for the policy work that would follow. Then, in the winter of twenty-twenty-three, the economic development work group really kind of cranked up their work on the economic development element and, and refined a draft of that element to provide to the Planning Commission. At the same time, and this is when, the winter of twenty-three is when the Planning Commission took up review of the capital facilities and utilities elements. Then, in the spring of twenty-three, the economic development work group provided their recommendation to this, to the Planning Commission, the initial economic development work group draft of, of the economic development element that was provided to the Planning Commission in the summer of twenty-three, and the Planning Commission began review of that in June of that year. At the same time, the City Council approved an addendum to the scope of work for the project to incorporate those additional steps that were, that were necessary based on House Bill twelve-twenty and some of the guidance that was coming out from the state. So, we expanded the scope of work in the summer of twenty-twenty-three to incorporate those additional tasks. The Planning Commission's review of the economic development element continued into the fall of twenty-twenty-three, and then in the winter of twenty-twenty-three into twenty-four, they, we began working on that housing element with the housing work group after completing some additional technical analyses, the land capacity analysis supplement, and the racially disparate impacts evaluation. At the same time, in the winter of twenty-four, the parks and recreation element, work on that began with the Parks and Recreation Commission, and they consider both the parks and recrea, or parks and open space element and the, the potential creation of a new open space zone. All of that began in the winter of twenty-twenty-four. Moving forward from there into this, this last spring, the Planning Commission completed its review of all the other elements and then conducted an open house on May first of this year. That was open to the public. We had about roughly forty participants come and participate in some different activities to give us some feedback on those draft elements to help the Planning Commission refine it further before making a recommendation. Then in May, on May twenty-ninth, the Planning Commission held their public hearing, and then deliberations were continued to June fifth and the twelfth until they ultimately arrived at the recommended draft that's before you here today. And so, that's my box here highlighting where we're at now. This summer, the City Council will review that Planning Commission recommended draft and provide staff with any comments on that draft, and then we'll bring back some recommended changes in the fall with a targeted adoption of the comprehensive plan update again before that deadline at the end of the year this year. So, that's a, a quick overview of the process that we went through. The next section here, I'll just touch on some of the elements, or touch on the elements that are, have a proposed amendments, and then we'll look at some of the new elements in the comp plan. So, the, the land use element was updated and primarily to remain consistent as we were updating other elements. So, as we were incorporating our new growth targets, as we were working on the housing elements and some of the other, the economic development element, we were constantly referring back to that land use element and making sure that it was consistent with those new changes. So, most of those changes were limited to maintain consistency with the other, other amendments throughout the plan. The transportation element was updated to ensure that our, our planned population growth through the planning period wasn't going to outpace our infrastructure's ability to serve that population growth, and that's primarily looked at through level of service or LOS standards, making sure that as areas of the city grow, intersections and roads maintain pace with that, that growth. Similarly, the capital facilities and utilities elements, both were updated based on those new tar, growth targets. The capital facilities element looks at city capital facilities like community, the community center, our, our parks, those, those types of capital facilities, and they, the capital facilities element evaluates those facilities for their level of service to make sure that our projected growth won't cause those facilities to fall below our adopted standards. The same with utilities, again, ensuring that our utilities can keep pace with our projected growth through the planning period. So, there's, there's three new or substantially rewritten elements in the comprehensive plan. The economic development element and the parks and open space element are both new elements. The Planning Commission reviewed the economic development element again last summer through fall, and then the parks and open space element was reviewed earlier this spring. Then the housing element, as Jeff mentioned, is a, is substantially rewritten, so the proposal here is that the existing housing element would be repealed and replaced with the proposed housing element. And the reason for that is because those, the requirements for the housing element, again, were substantially changed by recent housing legislation. So, throughout the process of drafting the economic development elements, we undertook several public participation activities to gather public input and incorporate that into, into the draft element. And then also, there was a, a key part early in the process of performing this economic analysis, which was a report that collected some economic data for the city to help us understand the current conditions in the city, the ways that we may want to support economic growth through policy. Then, once we had completed the first round of public participation and that data analysis, we began, staff began working with the economic development work group to put together that initial draft of the element, and that was a process that took about nine months, meeting intermittently through the process, skipped ahead, from October to June last year. And then the Planning Commission reviewed that element. This was, over the course of three meetings, the Planning Commission refined the draft economic development element. And this element establishes our strategies, projects and programs that the city will undertake in the next twenty years to retain existing businesses, attract new businesses, support the local workforce, and then grow partnerships with organizations throughout the, throughout the city. And then, really, it's, it's outlining overall the strategies that we want to deploy over the next twenty years, and one of the, one of the key pieces of this element is also the, the And one of the, one of the, uh, key pieces of this element is also the, the final set of, of policies in the economic development element outline a process by which that element will be implemented. Um, this is a new thing that some of the elements have, um, through this update that will help us make sure that the plan doesn't, uh, just stay in a binder on a shelf, but, um, is implemented and becomes a reality over the next 20 years. The parks and open space elements, um, is primarily exists to adopt the parks, recreation and open space plan by reference into the comprehensive plan. Um, so it's, it's fairly light on new policy direction and relies primarily on the pros plan to, um, outline how we'll address parks and open space. It does, the element does provide some policy direction for the adoption of new zones. Um, as I mentioned, the, with the comp plan update, we've been looking at, um, a potential open space zone. Um, and then following the comp plan update, at, at some point is there's a plan to revisit and, and pick up a park zone, um, so a zone specific for parks. Um, but that will be after the comp plan is, after the comp plan update is adopted. The housing element had a little bit more protracted of a process than the other elements. There were three main technical reports that were prepared by staff in advance of the housing element draft. Um, there was the housing needs assessment, which was prepared early in the process, uh, from June to November of 22. Um, and that looked at, um, it was some data analysis to see how we might, uh, accommodate our housing needs, um, our projected housing needs for the next 20 years. Whereas the land capacity analysis, uh, supplement looked at i- in light of, um, the housing need that we have at different income levels, what types of housing might we need to, um, accommodate our projected growth? Um, and so the land capacity looked at whether or not, um, the current zoning allows enough housing units to accommodate that proj- projected growth. Um, and then the racially disparate impacts evaluation was a data analysis that staff prepared at the end of last year, um, to evaluate, um, policies as required by the GMA, um, and based on guidance from the Department of Commerce for any potential racially disparate impacts that may have resulted from those housing policies. So all three of those reports were really combined together and, and considered as the housing work group picked up, uh, drafting a housing elements, um, at the, in the early part of this year, um, and eventually producing a draft, um, an initial draft of the housing element to the planning commission for their review in March of 2024. Uh, the planning commission then undertook two rounds of review on the housing elements, um, prior to the, um, the public hearing that was held in May of this year. Um, and the end result is the draft that's before you today. And some of the key pieces of the housing element are addressing our strategies and programs that we'll, uh, undertake to address our requirements for planning for affordable housing. Um, as you'll remember, we talked about this quite a bit at the beginning of the year, looking at ways that we need to, um, address housing at the different income segments, um, as projected by the state. Um, it also is important, the housing element is important because it helps, uh, plan for the, our adequate capacity to meet that 20-year, 20 years of housing need, um, projected through 2044. And then there's also, it incorporates some of the other requirements that were set, set in statewide legislation, um, such as the racially disparate impacts evaluation, um, piece that was part of House Bill 1220. Um, the focus of the housing element is primarily, um, on increasing the supply of affordable housing, um, particularly for those households that earn below the area median income. So it includes a whole raft of, of strategies that can be deployed again over the 20-year timeframe of the plan, um, to increase that supply and, um, address some of the affordability issues, um, that face the city long-term. As with the economic development element, the housing element also includes a set of policies to implement and track that implementation, um, with a specific process. Um, those are the, the final, um, policies in there. And those should all help, those policies should really help us keep track of again, like how far we've, we've come because in, in, one of the things that we are required to do following the update is, is a five-year check-in. So having those implementation policies in place will give us a good basis to keep track of how far we get implementing the plan. As noted in the agenda bill, um, there, we have received some agency comments and we expect some comments to come in from the Department of Commerce. Um, we expect to receive all of our, um, comments on the plan from other state agencies by the end of the month. Um, and we plan to, um, compile all of those, uh, agency comments for you and then present a recommendation for how to address those comments, uh, when we meet again in September. So this is the piece that, uh, Jeff had mentioned in terms of a schedule, kind of moving forward. I don't know if, uh, Jeff wants to speak to this piece now.
Yep. Thanks, Adam. Just to begin to wrap up here, council, um, we, uh, we did describe in the agenda bill to make it a little bit easier on you, if you wish to take advantage of it, a little bit of a rolling three, three-week window where, um, w- we just don't have one deadline that we're asking for all your proposed amendments, if you have, if you end up having, uh, some to submit to staff, but, uh, to break it out over a little bit of a, um, window here into the beginning of the summer recess. So you see here on the screen, um, we've got the first couple of elements, land use and housing, um, and then, uh, August 5th, uh, transportation utilities, capital facility elements, and then wrapping up on August 12th with the economic development, parks and rec and shoreline master program. We don't, um, we always encourage early participation, so, um, the sooner you'd like to, um, send any proposed amendments you may have to us, we welcome that, but, uh, we would ask if the council is agreeable that we set some deadlines, oh, uh, uh, in this type of fashion to allow you to systematically work through, um, you know, chunks of it and, um, go from there. So, Mayor, when you get to your point in, in the discussion, if there's, um, motion to be made, if council wanted to, to formalize, uh, this in a motion, that'd be great. If not, we can also just go with, um, with whatever dates the council decides works for you.
Yeah. While, while you have that on the screen, I just want to ask council if there's any, um, conflicts with those dates, does anybody need more flexibility? These are due dates, not submit dates, so you can submit whenever you want, but, uh, staff is looking for certain elements, um, having a cutoff before others due to the agency dependencies. Councilmember Reynolds.
Just, just a quick question of clarification. Should I interpret these as target due dates or absolute deadlines? Like, will they be considered if they come in after that date?
Uh, we will do our best to compile and roll them into your packet materials for September 3rd. Optimally, we would have everything in by August 12th to give staff time to go through them, um, and prepare the materials for September 3rd for the beginning of your deliberations.
Yeah, the, these will be due dates, council.
In terms of the September 3 in the materials you're going to provide to the council, how far in advance of September 3rd do you plan on, uh, providing that information?
Uh, well, the worst-case scenario would be when the packet's issued, but I do understand your point, Councilmember Jacobson, and we will work diligently to get some of those materials, if not all of them, to you as quickly as possible after the August 12th deadline.
Okay. Because I'm, I'm sure there will be other things that will be raised and, uh, since that's right around Labor Day weekend, and I don't know, I guess Labor Day weekend is the following weekend, I would guess.
I think it may be the weekend before the September 3rd meeting, if I'm not mistaken.
Pardon me?
I believe, I believe the Labor Day weekend will actually be right before the September 3rd council meeting, if I'm not mistaken.
So Labor Day is September 2nd?
Yeah.
Okay. Council, any other objections to the dates? Get Councilmember Andorl.
Um, not objection per se, but if we're not going to get information on agency comments until the end of July, that coincides with the first due date of July 29th for the introduction land use element and housing element. And so I see a, a little bit of a logjam there.
We'll be, um, we, we are anticipating on having all final agency written comments to us right there at the top of August. So we will be working to present to council on September 3rd and provide counsel, um, as, as soon as we're able to, um, the, not only the letters, the final written comments, but also, um, any staff recommendations that come out of those letters. So for September 3rd, what I envision is we'll have, uh, two sets of, uh, proposed amendments. Um, one set will be city council-generated proposed amendments. So that was the schedule that was just up on the screen there, that we would be pulling all that together for you. And then the second set of proposed amendments would be, um, agency, uh, recommendations that staff would be making based on the agency comments.
Okay. I, I have a better understanding how that's going to work. Thanks.
So just to set council's mind at ease, any agency comment that results in a proposed, let's say amendment, is going to be subject to council debating, deciding. Okay. So no agency's going to come in and make an amendment that the council's not going to be able to, uh, consider folding.
Correct.
Basically opens the door. Uh, City Clerk, do you have this motion that you can put on the screen while I read it? So council, I'm going to ask for a motion to set the following due dates for city council to provide any proposed amendments to the June 12, 2024 planning commission draft. Proposed amendments are welcome to be submitted earlier, but no later than the due dates below. Due July 29, introduction, land use element and housing element. Due August 5th, transportation element, utilities element and capital facilities element. And due August 12th, economic development, parks and recreation element and shoreline master program. Would anybody like to move that?
Remove.
Okay. Moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, seconded by Councilmember Wyker. All right.
I have an amendment.
Councilmember Jacobson.
I would like to add that the, uh, uh, city will have to the city council 10 calendar days prior to September 3rd, uh, the, uh, the finished work product for us to consider.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Jacobson, seconded by Councilmember Weinberg. Let me let her finish typing it. Okay. Does that capture your motion, Councilmember Jacobson?
Finished product is a little bit vague. I would, I would say the, well, just leave finished product.
Packet materials, the city staff will have the September 3rd packet materials probably published 10 days in advance of the meeting.
Yeah.
I think that puts us publishing those materials on or around Friday, August 23rd. Quick calendar counting. Jeff, do you have any, any concerns with that deadline? The alternative is we pull the items off the 3rd and push them to the next meeting, but I know that creates a bit of a problem downstream, given the calendar.
Okay. Councilmember Weinberg, is that, are you, uh, approving that?
Yeah.
Those modifications? All right. So it's moved to the seconded. Not hearing any objection from staff unless Jeff, we lost Jeff.
No, you, uh, no, you haven't lost Jeff. Um, yeah, I mean, i- if we get 400 council amendments, I'm not going to, I'm not going to, um, you know, tell you it's all going to be okay, that's going to be problematic. So, you know, we'll see what we get in from the council. The, the earlier, I would stress, and I think the mayor has mentioned it here already, um, the earlier you can get proposed amendments to us, it allows us to get going with the compilation process and, um, you know, preparing materials, so.
Okay. Council, any other questions on that motion? All right. City Clerk, please call a roll.
One moment. There we go. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker?
Aye.
Mayor Nice?
Aye.
And Councilmember Andorl.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Now we'll open it back up to questions for staff. Does anybody have any general comp plan process questions?
I do.
Councilmember Andorl.
Yeah. So looking at the comp plan and looking at the marked-up version of the, the exhibit B or 1B, um, how do we know which of these changes are strictly required by law and which ones aren't?
So the housing element, um, is the one, I, I actually wrote this in an email to, um, another council member here just yesterday, I believe. The housing element is annotated, I guess, per se with, um, uh, that's work that the housing worker requested when they were drafting the new element to make sure that they were capturing all of the, um, statutory requirements that had come to us from the state. In terms of the other elements, and I'll let Adam jump in here, um, we, um, starting with the baseline of the 2019 comp plan update, um, there's a lot of material in those other elements that, um, you know, were changes that were made either in terms of updating based on updated information or on, uh, planning commission, um, planning commission thoughts, I guess, and discussion. So, Adam, do you, do you want to chime in a little bit more on the land use element, perhaps, and the transportation element with some of the core requirements?
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry. Let, let me interrupt. I don't, I don't think you're actually asking, answering my question. I mean, as I look, go through it red line by red line, how will I know whether that is something that the planning commission is recommending or that staff wanted or, and whether if, whether it is because it is required by law or whether it is because the collective wisdom thought it was a better way to do it?
Yeah. So that, that annotation has not been done in the materials that you have. So we can, we're happy to answer questions if you have questions that come up as you move through the materials, uh, and we'll provide you in the council answers to those questions, um, to make sure that we're getting you clarification on whether it's something that must be in there or it's something that, uh, is not required to be in there necessarily.
Well, o- okay, so I'm going to have that question on every single change. I thought that that would have been being recorded as the changes were made.
Well, working, we started with the, we started with the 2016 comprehensive plan. So, um, if that's something the council would like us to do, is go back through the planning commission recommendation line by line and annotate that, then we can certainly have that discussion to do that.
Yeah. If the council would like the document annotated at that level, then I respectfully ask the last motion, um, we'll need a new motion and we will need to push this, this work out by at least a month to October. I, I don't recall, and I, and I appreciate why you're answering the question, Councilmember Andorl, it's, it's not our standard to annotate a, a planning document that way, but if the council desires for that to be done, uh, we, we, we will need to regroup and revisit the schedule.
Yeah. I, I guess this is my, my first rodeo with the comprehensive plan, so, um, I, I could have asked that be, being done on an ongoing basis and then not overburden staff now, had I known then what I know now.
Yeah. As the city manager just mentioned, it, it certainly is not a standard that is, has been historically done here or anywhere else that I'm familiar with. The reason why we did it with the housing element specifically was because of the flood of requirements through recent legislation that all came upon. of requirements through recent legislation that all came at once. And the, and the mayor and councilmember Wyker and Reynolds were on the housing work group, worked on the draft housing element. There was care that went into that to make sure that we weren't missing anything with all these new requirements that were coming in, in the manner in which they arrived.
Okay. Any other question? I'm going to go with a question, well, Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Go for it.
Let me just ask, Adam, you had made a comment about the comprehensive plan having some expectations on goals, goals and policies being completed, and that that may be somewhat new to this draft of the comprehensive plan. When there's something like an economic development goal or policy and we want to illustrate an expectation for completion for a goal or policy, what is the best way to do that and what should we not do? Give us the best practices there.
Sure. So first, anything that's in the plan should be, should be something that the, the city is planning to do at some point. It doesn't have to be today or tomorrow, but in general, it's a, if, if we're not intending to do something, that policy maybe shouldn't be in the plan unless it's, unless it's something that's required. In terms of like how decisions would be made about implementation, the, the process for the economic development element or the housing element, it outlines a process whereby the city council will decide which items to implement by adding those to the CPD or other departmental work plans through the budgeting process. So it's not necessarily, the, the city council has that discretion of what would be implemented at the time that it's making those decisions. And something could be, even in those policies, it talks about, there's a policy specifically that talks about if we don't have the resources to do this today, we could put that on a future work plan or delay implementation of that process. So the city council ultimately has a fair amount of leeway in what policies it may implement. But certainly, we don't want to have a policy in the plan that we don't have any intention of doing.
Okay. So goals and policies in, let's say, in economic development, absent a due date, if you want something done sequentially, let's say you have an 8.1, 8.2, 8.3, and you want them done in that order, but we're being told not to put dates in there, do we just take 8.1 to proceed, 8.2 to proceed, 8.3? Or does that need to be kind of built into the policy framework of that section? These are sequential goals and policies. They should roughly be completed in this order.
You could probably word the, the policy in a way that specifies that 8.1, 8.2 would follow 8.1 and so forth. So if you wanted to lay out a sequence, you would just need to structure that policy that way. Currently, there aren't policies that outline that kind of order of operations in the draft. Again, leaving that up to future councils to make that decision, so. But if you wanted to do that, you certainly could structure the policy that way.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add on to Adam's comments, I agree, we can add some language that, that sort of describes the order of operation, but it's a recommendation, right? This isn't a document that mandates things. It's, it's overarching policy. The councils, future councils, current council then takes, you know, uses this, this document to set the work plan for each biennium. And, and that is really where, you know, we lay out specific action steps and back it with the resources to complete the work. I'm not sure if that helps answer your question.
Well, as long as we can reconcile that with what Adam said, which is don't put something in there you're not going to do. I take that to mean, you know, it is essentially the beginnings of a work plan, a commitment to do a thing.
It absolutely is, and it, it, we may not, you know, the proposed plan is a good example. That, that is a, a document where we're working through a very long list. I can tell you at the end of the current proposed plan, we'll have not completed all of the action items, but we'll reconsider them and, and put them into the next plan. So it is, if there's something we're putting in that we're never going to do, that's, that's not appropriate. It's okay, you know, to reach and, you know, be thoughtful out the next 20 years. We really don't know what will happen in that, that planning cycle.
Okay. Deputy Mayor.
The comprehensive plan is a 20-year horizon document that currently is required to be updated every 10 years. So.
All right. I've got anxious council here, so I've got to feed them. Councilmember Jacobson.
Wouldn't, wouldn't it be simpler? Well, first of all, a future council can just say, you know what, we don't want to do that for whatever reasons there may be, resources or because everybody thinks that we, you know, they, they don't like the policy and that I don't think we can bind a future council. And wouldn't it be simpler to say on these, these policies, subject to the councils implementing this through a work plan? Because that's the way it's really going to work in, in the end, isn't it?
Yeah. I think that, that's an understood caveat to these policies.
Okay. You might want to add that in your list of amendments.
Well, I, yeah. I'd be more comfortable that, that if we state these kinds of things and not say, well, it's assumed or it's implicit or something like that, because that just creates an argument later at a point in time. I'll suggest some language.
Okay. Councilmember Reynolds.
Two quick things. One, I just want to respond to Councilmember Andrell's complaint, uh, not complaint, her comment. The, having worked through the, the housing element, I think it would be extremely difficult to define which of these changes are mandated by state law, because state law requires that we address a problem and meet a need, but it doesn't define how we do that. And so any given change that is in the document may not be explicitly required by state law, but it was a way that was, but it was motivated by state law. So I think it's important to keep that distinction in mind. The second thing is, I just want to raise a quick point of order, and I apologize, I may have missed something, but on, on the, the schedule that we had, we had an original schedule put up, and then we had an amendment offered to add the 10 days before the end of August. Was the vote we took on the amendment, and if so, did we ever pass the original motion? I think I only heard one vote.
That's a good point.
You did not, you passed the amendment, but you didn't vote on the main motion.
So you can have more amendments. You have more amendments.
I have no more amendments, but I think we should close the loop and vote on the original one. I think I've used my quarter tonight.
That almost got pushed to October, so. All right. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Yeah. First, I want to thank, I think we still have the Planning Commission chair in the virtual room here, but I, I want to thank them for their work. You know, I served on the economic development, element development team, and that was a lot of work, and I know the housing element was as well, and I know the staff's put a lot of effort into it, and the, the Planning Commission had many, 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 many hours of discussion on this. So I just want to say thanks, and a lot of thought and effort went into that. The question I have is around the review schedule from Commerce and other folks at the state agency, state level. Do we, the first one is, do we believe that we have commits for them to meet the deadlines that we're trying to meet here? And also, do we have any expectations of additional rounds beyond the current one with them?
The expectation is that we will get final comments from Commerce here about three weeks out, within three weeks. And then that should conclude the agency comment, commenting on the comprehensive plan. Our goal, our goal, as I previously stated, is then to compile those comments, make determinations as to what comments staff will recommend to council that council consider further. And then there'll be some that we are, will likely, I suspect, recommend that council does not consider further. There will not be, it's, it's not quite like a building permit where we may have multiple rounds of review going back and forth. So this process will conclude with a council action later in the year, which would be adoption of an ordinance. The agencies will receive, Commerce, that, that final ordinance, the final version of the comprehensive plan. If there was an agency that was not satisfied with the city's work, the recourse at that point would be to appeal the council's action to the Washington State Government Management Hearings Board.
Great. Thank you.
But Jeff, just for clarity, there, there is going to be post-comp, comp plan adoption, agency review that happens for everybody's comp plans, right? The AHC, PSRC.
There's PSRC certification. There is, as I mentioned, Commerce will receive the final version of the comprehensive plan, but it's, it's, it's a, the review process is now. The more the judicious process would be later.
Okay. Just setting the stage, make sure everybody knows that it's going to go on for a while. Councilmember Wyker.
So I'm just going to thank Angie and everyone for all their work over 30 meetings, two years and one public meeting. And I plan on following the format of exhibit two, where you list the element and the language you propose so that staff can say yea or nay or point to whatever dialogue we're going to have on September 3rd. So is that how you prefer to get amendments, like in a table like this with specific language to reject or modify over hours and hours on September 3rd?
Yeah. The, the more specific a proposed amendment is in terms of change this word, don't change this word, is really helpful in this process.
Okay. Counsel, any other discussion? All right. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
Mayor Neese.
Aye.
And Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Motion is adopted. Last call for any questions. Yeah? Councilmember Jacobson.
I was curious. I noticed in, back in, I think, one of the exhibits at the end of the exhibit 1B, mention of the school, the school district and the school board and capital facilities. Why are we discussing the school board?
So part of the, part of the capital facilities element looks at our school's capacity to keep pace, again, with our projected population growth. And that's to make sure that we're not planning for growth that would outpace our, our school's capacity to serve. The school board, we coordinate with them, or the school district, rather, we coordinate with as we're planning our capital facilities element. Again, to make sure that those things are aligned.
Any other questions? All right. Jeff, Adam, thank you for your work. Chair Potazo, rest of the Planning Commission, thank you. We move to our next item of regular business, which is AB 6514, Town Center Parking Regulations. And we'll welcome Senior Management Analyst Robbie Cunningham. Adam, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Again, for the record, Robbie, your senior management analyst in the city manager's office. I'll be joined by Amelia Chaden, a management analyst in the city manager's office. We also have folks from PD and from Public Works available to answer questions as they come up. We'll have Casey Share, PowerPoint presentation. So I'm going to give just a quick introduction, and I'm actually, I'm going to hand this off to Amelia. So, council, tonight, we're discussing Town Center Parking Regulations. Go ahead and go to the next slide. I want to give a little bit of background as to why and how we're here right now. We're going to give some information on the parking counts that we conducted two months ago. We're going to discuss some of the implementation actions. We're hoping to get feedback from council tonight, and then we'll talk next up in questions. Next slide. So, council, you may remember late last year that you adopted the Town Center Parking Plan. This plan resulted in a lot of work and discussion and study. You know, the plan strives to activate Town Center by making parking more functionally available, accessible for different users, and supportive of other options for non-driving travel, like walking and biking to around Town Center. So we're here tonight in response to that to start chipping away at some of the recommendations of that plan. Next slide, please. So this presentation, we'll explore five main discussion items, and we're hoping for your kind of input and feedback, and we'll come back to you to take final action on them. So that includes increasing the parking citation fee from $20 to $54, adding language to the code to specify the distance a vehicle must move to be legally reparked, standardizing time limits in Town Center, implementing, potentially implementing an on-street parking management system that would facilitate two hours of free parking with an option for paid extension, and finally, sunsetting the Town Center Parking Permit Program. Next slide, please. And with that, I'm going to hand it off to Amelia.
Thank you, Robbie. Good evening, council. My name is Amelia Chaden, Management Analyst, and I will be guiding you through the rest of tonight's presentation. Next slide, please. Starting with the Town Center Parking Counts. So parking counts have been conducted annually since 2022 on the 2,750 on-and-on-street spaces in Town Center. This year, the parking counts were conducted in the second full, or the second week of May, being Thursday, May 9th and Saturday, May 11th. These dates were chosen to represent the normal conditions in the parking system in Town Center, being that school is still in session and that there are no major holidays. IDAX, a data collection company, conducted the parking counts using both in-person observation and cameras. Next slide, please. The parking count showed that peak parking demand occurred at noon on both the weekday and the weekend count. During the weekday count, the parking peaked, our on-street parking peaked at 81%, and during the weekend count, it peaked at 76%. A common practice in parking management is to compare the occupancy rate to an 85% threshold, meaning that if occupancy is above the 85% threshold, then demand exceeds supply, but if it is below, then supply exceeds demand. The parking counts show that we are nearing this threshold, which is important to keep in mind as changes like the sound transit light rail station open hopefully next year and the future commuter parking project on the former Tully site come into play. Next slide, please. So this brings us to the bulk of our presentation tonight, which are the implementation actions. Next slide, please. And as a reminder, council, we are not taking any action tonight. This item is for discussion only, so we will take whatever feedback you have and translate that into something actionable to bring back to you for final approval before implementation. Next slide, please. Whatever we come back to you with for the implementation actions, we'll have a comprehensive communication campaign that includes an active Let's Talk page outreach to the business community and community partners, as well as the Chamber of Commerce, and then broadcasting widely on social media in the MI Weekly and in the MI Reporter. Next slide, please. Our first implementation action is the parking citation fee. So currently, the parking citation fee is $20. The city defaulted to the state-established fee of $20 in 2022 when an audit of the municipal code by the Administrative Office of the Courts revealed that the fee was not established in code. This low citation fee does not deter people from overstaying their parking, making street parking less functionally available. Raising the citation fee could improve compliance with parking regulations and improve turnover rates. Staff recommends increasing the citation fee to $54. $54 was chosen as this is the rate that the city of Bellevue uses for their parking citation fees, and this rate would create parity between the city and its neighboring jurisdictions. Next slide, please. Our second implementation action is the distance a vehicle must move to be considered reparked. So currently, the city operates three police vehicles with automatic license plate reading cameras, or ALPR cameras, to inform, or for, to track parking duration. The municipal code does not currently specify how far a vehicle must move to be considered reparked, and our ALPR cameras are only accurate to around 30 feet. So this means that a car could roll forward one space and be considered reparked, but that movement may not be detected by the cameras, which limits the ability of the police support, support officer to create enforceable citations in court. And as such, the police support officer must manually chalk tires to issue parking citations. So the image you see on screen is what the chalked tires look like. Next slide, please. Staff recommend adding language to the municipal code that would require a vehicle to move to a different block to be considered reparked. Many definitions of block exist, but a regional definition is the stretch of roadway between two closest public street intersections on either end of the stretch. Next slide, please. This change would allow the ALPRs to fully function for parking enforcement and greatly improve the capacity and efficiency of the police department. This change would also encourage turnover in parking in Town Center, which would make parking more functionally available. Next slide, please. So with that, council, I'm going to turn it over to you to discuss increasing the citation fee from $20 to $54 and adding language to the municipal code that would specify the distance a vehicle must move.
Okay. Thank you for that. Councilmember Andrell.
Yeah, I, I'll just start.
Yeah, I, I'll just start by saying I don't have any problem with increasing the citation fee. I do have concerns with how do we effectively notify people about the distance issue. I mean, I know if I were parked on a city street and it was a two-hour limit and I hustled back, and I saw that there was an empty space across the street, and I was able to make, you know, make a U-turn, a legal U-turn, of course, and parked in that, I would, I would feel one-hundred percent confident that I had a fresh two hours. And so, is there street signage? I mean, putting it in the code is just unrealistic to expect that people would, would read the code or know to do that. So, while I, I get the point, well, how do we implement that in a way that's, that's fair to residents and
Let me give you a
residents and visitors alike?
Let me tell you a story about Vancouver, Washington, where we were at AWC. I exclusively parked on the street, and the app that they had was able to tell me that, the exact thing that you're talking about. It said you could park here for two hours, but when your time is up, you cannot park here for another two hours. And it told me where I must move, like how far. So, I think part of the discussion that we're gonna have tonight is which app should we use? And there's a matrix in the AB on a series of apps, but
Well, we're using an app, but, but it's free parking.
It's free parking, but it requires a session to begin, right? So, you have to start a session.
Sounds like you're now saying that you have to have a phone to park commercial.
So you have your two free hours. Obviously, this is for discussion, but there is a section of this AB that contemplates which app would you like to use? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll jump in here. So, tonight, council, you're considering a variety of potential options. And so, you're correct, Mayor, if we were to give, receive direction from council to implement an app-based system, we could certainly have that as an option, as a communication tool. Should council not choose to give us direction, but want us to add the moving distance regulation, in addition, we would certainly do the communications campaign, and, you know, we have, you know, communicated widely, so the change is known. PD could, would be happy to explain more. We could also do a grace period where we would give warnings and do education. So, there's, there's a variety of options. You, council, could consider us giving direction to add signage that would explain the regulation. I do know that signage can be, there's trade-offs certainly of too much signage, sign clutter, versus wanting to clearly communicate what the regulations are. So, happy to, we're happy to hear feedback and requests on how we would go about that. Thank you.
Okay. Does that, do you have further commentary on that? Do you let, just let that soak in a little bit?
Well, I, I just wasn't contemplating that we were going to be like the buildings that I dislike intensely that require you to have a phone to get your quote-unquote "free parking." So, I think I'm against that part of it, but
Okay, council, Councilmember Jacobson?
I have a vague recollection that chalking tires was some racist practice or something that a court had said we can't do. Is that recollection incorrect?
Counsel, Mike Seifer, the operations commander with the police department, and the courts, they did have a period of time where they said we were not allowed to chalk tires. That has since changed. They have taken that and changed it and realized it is one of the feasible ways to make sure the parking isn't forced.
Thank you.
I have another question.
Go ahead.
In, in terms of citing people, we're talking about citing people who are parked on streets. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, parking lots such as the one that, I think it's Islandia Center, they were Outbooks and Terabella, all that, that's up to those people to enforce whatever parking rules they want to enforce?
Yes, that would be correct.
Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Wyker.
Officer Seifer, can you talk about how ALPR would work instead of an app or with an app? Like, give me some technology training here.
So, what we're fighting right now is the ALPR, the difficulty it presents is it's able to tell us, you know, that this vehicle was here in a period of time. We marked it, we saw it, and then you have to see it at a second point in time to know that it's been there beyond the time it's allowed to be there for free. So, the issues we have with that are making sure that an officer is there at both points in time, which, due to the, you know, staffing levels we have, we have one officer that's primarily focused on parking and just other calls, things that other people are dealing with. That's not gonna happen very consistently, probably not consistently enough to where there's gonna be a real risk of enforcement occurring if you're taking the risk of parking improperly. The other issue we have with the ALPRs without the movement is that the ALPR will recognize that your car was where it was when the police car that has the ALPR was at a certain location. So, the, the geo-tagging that occurs is on the police car. So, if I see everybody in this room, and then you have moved to the other side of the room, my car might think that you haven't moved. So, we have to do a little bit of extra enforcement. It's, it's not a heavy lift by any means, but it's not a very simple, this car's allowed to be here, this car's not allowed to be here, which is where the app, where the, the moving a block, where having the, the style of parking enforcement where it's either you're legally parked or illegally parked, as opposed to having a gap of time where the officer has to establish the beginning of that time and the violation of that time. Does that make sense?
Commander Seifer, if, if you, could you just elaborate a little bit? We've had some feedback from our judge about needing to do this very specifically when we're in, in front of him in court. And I, I think it's that he wants us to, to be able to document that we can prove there was a violation. Can you say more about that?
Yeah, so, so, basically, what happened was the, the PSO at the time had complete faith in the system that it was telling her everything that was accurate. So, for instance, if you moved across the room, we cited you for being in the same location without putting the extra investigation. You complained to the court saying, hey, I, I did the legal U-turn, went across the street, and I still got a parking ticket. We looked at the photographs, we looked at the information that was provided by the ALPR, and realized, oh, you're right, you did. So, it was kind of an error in the system that we didn't know was there, and it created a, basically, a need for whoever's the, the officer issuing the ticket to say, I've confirmed that that car was in the same location. The, the judge would not accept that just based on the ALPR alone, without the person confirming everything was the way it was, that we would not be able to issue those tickets.
Okay, Councilmember Weinberg?
Yeah, first of all, my apologies for speaking out of turn a moment ago. So, I am in support of the, the proposed increase up to fifty-four. I, I think it's important also to provide guidance that we are looking for increased enforcement, but also grace periods, as, as was suggested. I think that any type of change, there's, communication's gonna be imperfect. We can't get to absolutely everybody. And knowing that there's a chance to get a warning so that, so we can learn what the new rules are, would be appreciated by the people.
Thank you, Councilmember Reynolds.
I, I just wanna make sure I understand. I'm not sure I do at the moment. If we make this change that requires moving to the next block, do we still need to chalk tires or have an app, or will the ARPR, ALPR by itself be enough to make an enforceable citation?
It would make it easier for the ALPR to identify that a vehicle has clearly moved from one location to the other, where it's not just a few steps away or across the street. In theory, that would make that part easier. As, as a police officer mindset, if we want perfect enforcement, that comes from removing the, having a time limit be what you're looking for. Having a, a vehicle that is, as Mary Neese said, you sign in. I know there's, there's some, you know, not wanting to do that because it requires extra steps, but if, if the officer can be in the area at one single point in time and know that the vehicle is illegally parked, it's going to allow much more consistent enforcement, as opposed to having to witness the vehicle at two separate points in time.
So, if I made a quick follow-up, my, my understanding is, without the app, somebody might park somewhere at noon, and the officer comes by the first time at three o'clock, and then again at five. If the car's gone at five, he or she may think there's been no violation, when really, there was already at the time of the first stop, right? Is that the sense of the issue?
And I would say that's, that's a very likely situation with the saturation of enforcement we have focused on parking.
But if we have the app, would he be able to know every car that he sees that it's been there for three hours already when he sees it the first time?
I don't wanna say for sure, yes, but in theory
That, that's the intent?
The intent, yeah. What we see from the products that are available to us, yes.
Okay, and I have one unrelated question, if I may. Okay. Talk to us a little bit about what the enforcement process is for payment of these fines. Like, if, if I get a hundred of these things, is somebody gonna boot my car? And if so, how, how bad does it have to get before you do that? Or what else do you do instead of that?
Yeah, that's, from the police standpoint, that's not a question I know how to answer. That would be something that the courts would deal with. Presumably, what I've heard anecdotally with other cities is if you have a lot of, of tickets on your vehicle, eventually you can't register your vehicle anymore. Then you start to get tickets for having an unregistered vehicle, which leads to your license being suspended. So, it's kind of a chain of worsening events and worsening punishments.
City Manager Bond?
Thank you.
Yeah, Commander Seifer, don't go too far. I wanted to just call out that the ordinances for these items are not written yet. We, we need to write them. But there is an advantage to using an application system where we have the potential to enforce based on time, not necessarily location. So, you get two hours free parking in town center. It could be, if we write the ordinance this way, wherever. After two hours, you know, if we establish a parking window, it becomes paid. So, it, it, there, there is an opportunity through our, our future work on this to eliminate the location and the block moving and to just say it's based on time. But that app is really key for us because it requires you to register your car. We then do all the programming, which is, it's a considerable lift, right, to take the parking app and have it talk to our own ALPR software. But, but we have, you know, there's, there's several, you know, flavors of ice cream here. And what, what I'm going to be advocating for ultimately is efficiency. I, I can't come to you and recommend that we add two more police officers for parking enforcement. I have to recommend that we implement tools and, and modern ordinances that make our job easier, and that also achieve your goals that you laid out in your Town Center Parking Plan.
All right, Councilmember Wyker.
So, two-hour parking during the day? Would there be free overnight parking? Is it two hours, twenty-four seven? Like, what, did we already talk about this, or?
No, we, there was actually a second, second part of the presentation. I'm wondering, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like us to run through that deck since we jumped already?
Yeah, there's so many dependencies here. I, I'll just go on the record and say I support your approach here, which is, I believe, an app, which requires starting a session that is two hours for free, and then could have some paid component after that. Am I understanding correctly? If we do just that, we don't need the move-your-car-a-block or any of that business, because everybody should have an active session. And if they don't, then they, we get a ticket? Is that the way this would work?
Yeah, it's, if, if, if you would like, if council would like us to set up a system where it's not location-based, it's only time-based, then if we had an app system, we would not necessarily need to. I'd wanna confirm and come back to you that there's not a, a reason with court or the code that we would need to have some sort of location item in the, in the code, but I believe that we could do that.
So, what I just explained is what is currently happening at the boat launch, right? You, if you're parked at the boat launch and you don't have an active session, you're illegally parked.
That's correct. You're either legally parked or you're not legally parked there. And when the enforcement officer goes through at that point of time, they're able to tell this car's allowed to be here or is not allowed to be here.
And the ALPR is doing that job?
Correct.
Okay. All right, that's what I support. All right, carry on.
Yeah, go for it.
Casey, could you pull up the slide deck, please? And next slide. All right, well, thank you for your comment. Okay, so this brings us to our second set of recommendations. So, hopefully, we can get some of these questions answered. So, as you can see in the map on screen, street, on-street parking in town center is currently regulated, sorry, this is giving me trouble, through various time limits and restrictions. Next, next slide, please. The Town Center Parking Plan recommends converting all on-street parking in town center to two-hour time limited parking. This would exclude ADA spaces, loading zones, and then the three-minute zones. So, unfortunately, this map is a little difficult to see, but the map is showing where these changes would take place. So, areas encircled in either a red or a blue box are where they would be subject to the new two-hour time limit. A few things to note about this map is that the parking restrictions for the former Tully site at the end of East Sunset Highway, which is the purple cul-de-sac encircled by a blue box, may change as the project comes online. And then we will discuss this later, but the Town Center Commuter Parking Permit, which are the areas where the roadway is highlighted in yellow, and then there is a red box, those regulations may also change. Next slide, please. Implementing this potential action would require changes to the existing signage in and around town center. So, as you can see in the photos below, our signage is currently inconsistent with how it is listed and the, the information that it is listing. To implement this, the time limit standardization, we would need to replace and install around a hundred new signs, which would have a cost for, of about five thousand dollars for placards, posts, and bindings. Next slide, please. A second consideration for this are the applicable hours for time limits. So, currently, in the municipal code, there are no standardized hours for when parking restrictions are applicable. So, staff explored two common options for applicable hours, the first one being eight AM to five PM Monday through Friday, which would accommodate a workday schedule, meaning that people commuting to and from town center would be unable to park on-street all day. The second option is eight AM through eight PM Monday through Saturday, which again promotes turnover during the day, but also maintains street parking for evening activities like shopping and dining. Next slide, please. So, to build off of the time limit standardization, staff explored a system where motorists could register their vehicle in exchange for two hours of free parking. And to take this one step further, motorists could have the option to extend the two hours for payment, which would mean the first two hours would be free, but a motorist could pay for an additional amount of time. Next slide, please. To implement a registration or a payment system, the city could be required to use a mobile parking payment service, like Pay by Phone or Park Mobile. The city could also be required to use a second registration system, like a kiosk or a pay station for people that do not have cell phones or credit cards. And then finally, the city would need an integration with the city's existing parking enforcement software. These changes would apply to the two hundred and fifty on-street spaces in town center. Next slide, please. Staff explored a few of the parking management systems used in the area. Pay by Phone is a regional player that is used by the City of Seattle, and it is what we currently use at the Mercer Island Boat Launch. Park Mobile is also used regionally. They are the parking payment provider for Diamond Parking, and they are used at the Island Square Garage. Again, council, I would like to remind you that this agenda item is for discussion only. We are not taking any action tonight. So, should council decide to explore a parking registration system, staff would conduct additional research and provide a recommendation for you. That being said, what I'm hoping to show you with this slide is that should the city pursue either a registration or a payment system, there would be a cost to that that could either be assumed by the city or passed on to the user. And that cost would come in the form of transa, of a transaction fee, which would be either thirty-five cents or forty-five cents, or a monthly subscription fee. The other thing I'm hoping to show you with this slide is that different vendors provide different services, which is something to keep in mind as we move forward. Next slide, please. Our last implementation action to discuss is the Town Center Commuter Parking Permit Program, which was established to provide an alternative to the park-and-ride. Essentially, if you are a permit holder, between seven AM and nine AM, you are able to park in designated on-street spaces in town center, Monday through Friday. The parking in those spaces is then unrestricted after nine AM. All island residents are eligible for permits, and permits cost, permits cost five dollars per year per vehicle. As you can see in the table on screen, the permit numbers have slowly been declining over the last few years. Next slide, please. The 2024 parking counts also show that the permit program is underutilized. During the eight AM weekday count, only seven percent of the vehicles parked in the area had valid permits. That is two vehicles out of the twenty-seven vehicles that were parked there. With the opening of the Future Commuter Parking Project at the former Tully site, increasing capacity for commuters in the area, staff recommend sunsetting the Town Center Commuter Parking Permit Program to preserve valuable on-street parking, create consistency in parking restrictions, and better facilitate future changes in town center. Next slide, please. So, with that, council, we are seeking your feedback on standardizing the time limits in town center to two hours, implementing an on-street parking system that would facilitate two hours free parking with the option for time extension with payment, and sunsetting the Town Center Commuter Parking Permit Program. I will turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you. So, Councilmember Andrell? So, Councilmember Reynolds.
Thanks. I don't know if I missed it or not. Was there a recommendation as to the cost for extending past the two free hours?
As part of this agenda bill, we did not go into any rates for parking.
Okay.
All right, while you have the mic, what is your opinion on permit parking? Should it stay or should it go?
I think permit parking should go.
Okay.
And I also think that I do like the two-hour standardization. And I'm kind of on the fence about extending for money, you know, for a paid fee because it kind of tends to defeat the drive to turnover spaces, which is what the two-hour is supposed to do.
Okay. So, council, can we tackle this permit parking issue? Does anybody have objection to sunsetting it? Councilmember Reynolds?
I generally support it, but I have one question about it, which is, are we sunsetting the individual portion of that? Or are the grandfathered businesses who use it for employee parking also being sunsetted?
I think we're open to your feedback and direction on that, but I think my baseline assumption would be we would sunset the whole program. But happy to discuss further.
For what it's worth, I'd like to preserve the business-employee parts that have been grandfathered in.
Well, you say it as though it's happened, but it hasn't. Grandfathered in is a concept you would have to create.
I think...
You want to grandfather...
I think they were describing that it was already grandfathered in, that it was, these were permits given to individuals or there was a special program for employee parking.
Council, would it be helpful to hear the number of permits that we are grandfathered in in the specific?
Yeah, maybe you can add some color on this concept.
There are currently two businesses that are grandfathered into this program, Mercer Island Dental and Advanced Orthodontics. And collectively, they have about 20 permits that represent...
And is the distinction that those permits are owned and paid for by them rather than by the individuals, is that correct?
Yes, the businesses pay for the permits.
Okay, because the individuals right now could pay the five bucks and get it on their own, right?
It's only open to residents.
It's only open for residents.
Yeah. Council, we're not making a decision tonight. I understand we'll need to bring back, you know, the action that you would need to take. That, I will tell you, my recommendation is going to be in the program in its entirety, continuing to steward, and grandfather is just another practice that's inefficient for the staff, stewarding those few permits. If, at that time, you would like to propose an amendment to do something different, you know, to grandfather someone in, I would look for that action. My position is to sunset the program in its entirety.
You convinced me.
Councilmember Wyker.
Okay, so turning our attention to the map, I get we're trying to bring turnover to town center businesses, but I'm worried about those multifamily properties that won't have guest parking for folks that want to stay more than two hours or have to pay four hours to spend an afternoon with their grandma or something. So if we could build in a little more unrestricted parking closer to the multifamily, I'm looking at 32nd and 79th, I think, kind of in that corner above the thrift store and maybe over towards Met Market and 27th and, I think it's 76th. So creating a little more grace for guests of our multifamily homeowners and renters feels a little more hospitable to letting people stay to visit folks in multifamily buildings.
May I offer you a staff perspective?
Yes, please, Jesse.
I know you will.
Yeah. If you haven't noticed, I feel pretty strongly about this. We currently have a patchwork of mishmash regulations throughout town center, which is just ridiculous for us to enforce. It's really inefficient. And while I sympathize with the special needs of the grandma visiting, we are really strongly advocating for consistency for enforcement and management. And if we start to carve out areas of our town center, and some of the streets you mentioned, while they are adjacent to multifamily, they also have businesses right there that need that parking as well. And that is some of the places we have the most vehicles overstaying, right? So ultimately, it will be the council decision. I just don't want to leave tonight without, you know, speaking on behalf of my colleagues here that have to enforce the system.
So fully appreciate that. And I think leaving a little more on the fringe might give us a little grace for 20 or 30 parking spots because we're taking the yellow away, we're taking the green away, we're putting two hours everywhere all the time. So maybe a little grace on the perimeter. We don't have as much commercial activity, but more multifamily residential activity. Maybe some options.
Okay. Council, anybody want to comment on the permit parking?
Yeah. I guess I've spoken with some of the businesses that do continue to use the permits. And it's, it would be a burden on their employees to say that, okay, now you've got to actually pay out of pocket. They probably wouldn't lose their employees as a result of that, but it would just be taking, essentially, making things more convenient for the city and less convenient for the people who live here or who work here. If the majority of the council wants to do that, to simplify it and make it harder for employees to park, then I guess the majority wants that. But I think we should be considering the people we represent.
Well, what I will add to that is that, you know, you only have a limited number of on-street parking stalls. And this is a public benefit. This should serve the benefits of the public. And using it for employee parking, which is a commercial activity, who could put that commercial activity onto the site in which they lease their property, is to me the right thing to do to preserve the access to the public benefit. So I support sunsetting the plan, sunsetting the permits. And, you know, those folks can fall into a paid permit or a paid parking session, or they can park on the grounds of their, you know, leased location. I would prefer the consistency and the certainty of standardized parking hours and out. All right. Anybody new want to speak? Deputy Mayor Rosamont, you have thoughts on this?
Yeah, I think we got to kind of go through our north star here, which is that we are trying to create additional parking for folks to visit businesses. And anything that trudles down from that, that would be a hindrance that I think we should strongly consider doing away with. And I think, in my mind, that's where the permit comes in, where you have someone in theory, you know, paying $5 a year, correct? That we would value much higher under the new, the new plan. So I think we have to have consistency there.
Okay. So I'm getting the sense we're not going to get there without a thumbs up on this thing. So I'm going to be looking for some consensus on eliminating or grandfathering the permit parking. If you want to do that, thumbs up. Looks like you have your consensus there. What's the next thing that I can give you some consensus on? Single thing.
Single thing. The next thing to give consensus on would be the free two-hour parking with registration.
Okay, so we've consistently called it two-hour parking, even though it could be in four-hour parking. Can we find a way to describe this that is maybe more the question that we're trying to answer? Should people get two hours of free parking on a session that could last longer than two hours? I mean, do we need to take two bites at this, council? Do you want to decide on four hours, six hours, eight hours, but the first two hours is free? Or do you want, is there inclination to have only two hours and all of the two hours is free?
I'm inclined to go only two hours and it's all free.
Okay. And the alternative to that would be... Okay.
That doesn't turn the spaces over.
Yes, at some level of payment will create some turnover, but I can see both perspectives. Deputy Mayor Rosamont?
I think I'm in favor of the two hours and that be it. If the goal here is to get some turnover in the spots.
Okay.
I'd be supportive of two hours free and then a fee thereafter.
Okay, so I'm seeing some level of interest in having a fee beyond the two hours. Can, I mean, would it be enough direction to provide staff to figure that out and come back? Some sort of ordinance, proposed ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to clarify, is that what, when those of you that were saying just two hours and that, that's it? Was that two hours free and that's it? Or two hours paid and that's it?
Two hours free.
Two hours...
And that's it.
Okay. I think we've got, maybe if...
Well, I'm going to take some consensus once we can get this. But if you, in terms of looking for consensus, do you, would you be comfortable just not knowing how many the maximum is? But...
Yeah, work staff's going to need to do after this. I'm hearing two hours free with some amount of paid extension. So Millie and I are going to need to do some research on what is an appropriate rate and a payment amount. You know, what's the app that would best, most optimally manage that? Something that would be helpful feedback right now would be if there's initial thoughts. We don't need to make a final decision on, is it extended for as long as you want, all the way to the 72-hour rule? Is it maximum eight hours? Are the applicable hours only 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., so on and so forth, if that makes sense?
Gotcha. Deputy Mayor Rosamont?
Yeah, I think on that point, that, I'm trying to think of like Seattle and Bellevue here, just to, you know, on the consistency front, trying to figure out what they do. And then can we, Seattle might be harder, but I don't know if Bellevue is something we can look into for that question.
We could probably answer that question tonight.
City of Seattle uses an 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday. City of Bellevue does not charge for on-street parking, so I do not currently have a reference book, but can come back to you with that.
Okay, but I think his question was more like, is four the max? Is six the max? Is eight the max? That you could make a parking session.
Variable. So in, in areas that are larger than the Mercer Island Town Center, you can have a two-hour, four-hour, six-hour. So I, again, don't necessarily have a comparison right now, but could come back to you with that.
Yeah, I think Seattle is just, they've got a little more complicated situation than we do, so it's not the best comparison. We could come back to with more information on the variety of applicable hours in Bellevue or in the ways it varies in Seattle.
Yeah, I shouldn't have asked about Seattle because they also have like time changes if you're in a stadium zone, all sorts of things. But maybe like Kirkland, I think, and their, and their public lots, I think, has something, four hours?
Four hours. And then City of Vancouver, Washington, has a one-hour zone, two-hour zone, and a 10-hour zone.
One thing to keep in mind as we're comparing ourselves to other cities is particularly Seattle, and even to some extent Bellevue, has quite a bit of structured public parking. So places that people can go and legally park that are not on the street. We do not have that same luxury. We have some parking in garages to support businesses. But what we're trying to manage is our very limited supply of on-street parking.
Okay, so council, is there consensus on two hours free of parking on a session that could last longer than two hours that staff will come back and make recommendation on? Okay. It looks like you have support for that, right? Everybody caught that? Is that a question, Councilmember Reynolds?
Yeah, I have an additional related comment. This is on a similar topic, and I want to make sure, I think this is the place to introduce it. It strikes me that, to the extent we have a problem with parking, I think it's exacerbated by residents in town center who park their cars on the street all the time. And I think we need to consider a plan to, that would enforce the parking rules 24/7 rather than just until 8:00 p.m. to give the people who live in those buildings incentive to buy the building parking rather than taking up what should be business parking on the streets.
I think that point's, I think that point's well taken because when Seigneur Wal comes on stream, you can imagine people are going to say, "I'll park on the street" rather than incurring 300 bucks a month, which is what was in some materials earlier about this. That's 3,600 bucks a year, which is after-tax money. So that's going to become a huge problem with Seigneur Wal. It's even though, you know, some people feel that those people aren't going to have any cars. We, you know, we know differently, so.
Okay. Councilmember Reynolds?
One of the things that we need to keep in mind is that for merchant businesses to remain competitive, we need to be thinking not just about the first two hours being free, but also that parking needs to be a pleasant experience for the shopper. And by that, I mean the customer needs to be able to arrive by car, arriving by car at least, need to be able to arrive, park, do their shopping, get back in their car, and go. And they should not have to spend 30 minutes trying to figure out how to download an app, how to click through a bunch of fine print, and then how to enter their location number, license plate number, and their credit card number when they're not going to be paying because they're only staying there less than two hours. I think that the app should, if we do start using an app, I recommend that it only be for the people that are staying longer than two hours. And if we see a car that parks there that is not registered in the app, that's somebody who's staying there less than two hours. And if you still see that car again, you know, two hours later, then that's a violation. But we shouldn't, it burdened everybody, including people who are just there for five minutes, to have to download and install an app and record who they are and where they are.
Okay.
Which is why I support two hours free and no app and no option to pay for more.
Okay. Got it. All right. So did we get consensus on you're going to have... We didn't get it. So we're at two hours, we're looking for consensus on this. Go ahead.
Question for, I don't know, for Commander Cypher, but what would be the... I think we have to get a little granular here about some of the nuts and bolts of how this technology actually works and if what is being proposed of two hours, no app, but still being able to enforce is even, is possible? Or how, if I remember it correctly, it sounds like the app is pretty critical to the enforcement efforts. And without enforcement, don't have much here.
With the limited amount of resources we have focused primarily on parking enforcement, the two hours with no app would basically be what we have now. You have to have two separate points in time. It needs to be verified by the officer that the vehicle was here at 1:00 and then again sometime after 3:00 without having moved. So you just, you get very inconsistent, difficult enforcement with that.
Councilmember Wyker.
I'm in favor of the app. Can we have you guys look at that and figure out which one? We all use apps everywhere all the time in this crazy crowded region, so we all have phones.
Okay. More and more I hear, I'm more cemented on a two hours free on a four-hour maximum, 24 hours a day with an app. I see a thumbs up there. Two hours free, four hours maximum, 24 hours a day with an app. That's, yeah, down, down.
I need more time to think about it.
So what is going to make that, like, where are we going to go?
Eight to eight, two up to four.
So eight to eight is doing it for you.
No app.
No app, two for him. All right. This is a tough plane to land.
Aren't you glad you're mayor?
We need to elect a new mayor.
Whoa, whoa, let's, let's not lose it before the August recess.
Was that a motion?
All right, so I think, see, Mayor, you can see that this isn't getting anywhere productive. This is, you're going to have to come back with some options for council that can be cemented, that would include with an app, without an app. With this caveat that police are suggesting that something is enforceable and other things really won't be enforceable. And I want council to understand that, you know, I've heard it may be very difficult to enforce without an app, particularly if it's two hours. And so I don't want anybody to mix bones that, you know, that's going to help the parking situation.
If we do an app, for clarification, will we have to incur the expensive kiosks on every block for people who do not have phones?
It's really dependent on your preferences. We've already heard some feedback from folks that don't want to use their phone. That would be the alternative. Some apps allow you to call a phone number and register by phone, you know, as opposed to having an app on your phone. So you can actually call and use an automated machine or I think possibly talk to the live body during certain hours. It will cost more and certainly clutter uptown center to install kiosks. And we don't have that type of infrastructure in place right now, obviously.
Okay, so does it, making the ability to make a phone call to begin a session, is that a trigger that allows you to get over the app?
If they're making a phone call, they have a phone, they can use the app. I mean, it's the people who don't have a phone. Or, and the people who are only, you know, to Ted's point, staying for five minutes. I mean, it makes it a very unfriendly experience.
We are talking about the on-street parking stalls, not the 1,500, 1,600 total parking stalls that are available.
Right, right, the on-street.
Yeah, but if you're driving onto Mercer Island and your phone's out of battery, you should be able to pay for parking with cash. And you shouldn't be required to leave the island. If we say you've got to have an app, you've got to have a phone, we're essentially not being included. If we say you've got to have an app, you've got to have a phone, we're essentially not being inclusive.
Okay.
I don't know how you pay for parking with cash unless you put meters up.
You do it in Seattle.
I am not going to ever vote for metered parking on our street.
You can send a kiosk, and you can do the card, and you can also put in coins.
You have credit cards, it's not that inclusive. A lot of people can't get a credit card, don't want a credit card.
That's why we have the cash option in Seattle.
Bitcoin. All right, Councilmember Wyker.
I would remind us all that this is about town center businesses, and a lot of those businesses have parking on-site. So we're talking about the 250 spots in the public right away. So I think an app for those public domain spots is not too much asked, given if you're going to QFC or Island Books, they have a parking lot for free.
Okay, Councilmember Reynolds.
Just to get a note for the record, that I despise parking apps. I hate them.
Okay, let me-
But, but I think they're, but I think they're a necessary evil here. And the key thing is to pick one that is as easy to use as possible, that is the same all over town center, and to the extent possible, also the same app used by parking garages that have their own apps that are associated with it, so that people that live on the island have to suffer once to get it set up. But after that, it's probably easier than stopping to put coins in a meter, so.
I, I don't think you moved the puck. I mean, does anybody change their mind over that? You shouldn't start a speech with you hate an app. It's the position that you- Okay, what about just two hours free parking, no app? 24 hours a day?
I don't think that works for enforcement.
I mean, if you're going to, if we're not going to go over here, then we're not going to go over there. So if you don't like the no-app two-hour option, we're back to having an app.
Give me the app.
Okay. I started this thing in the middle. I was at two hours free, four-hour session with an app. I couldn't get four for that.
What are we, where are we at now?
We're, I'm going to go back to two hours free, four hour max, 24 hours a day with an app.
Take away the 24 hours?
I mean, I have to, because I need your thumbs up. So in that, in that- So what are you, an eight-to-eight gal? So you're two hours free, four hours max with an app, eight-to-eight?
There you go. I can do that.
All right, that's where we are.
You got it, run.
Okay.
Can I raise one more issue?
No.
Can you bring up the slides and go back to the photos of the different parking signs?
We can start a committee of one, and it's you to write the signs.
I like that idea.
They'd be very long.
I'm just going to note a pet peeve of mine. But I want to share, and my current pet peeve is I can't read that because it's too small. But there we go. When I read a sign like that, I don't know what it means. Does it mean that outside 8:30 to 5:30, you can park as long as you want? Or does it mean outside 8:30 to 5:30, you can't park at all? And the grammar does not make that clear. So when you guys set up your signs, please have somebody review the wording and make sure it's unambiguous. That's just my request.
Will do.
Okay. Now I'll shut up.
It's very serious. Okay, did we answer all the questions? I don't think you needed specificity on the which app, but do you want to get into which apps we definitely don't want to use? Like something you can't pay by phone? Like the one that's called Pay by Phone that you can't pay by phone?
Counsel, I think we've gotten enough direction that we can come back to with a more specific recommendation of the specific app that we would recommend based off of some of the guidelines we heard tonight.
Did we do the increase in the parking citation?
Yeah, I think we got, did we get to 54 on that? Everybody's good with the, you know, they got that.
So my only, I think my initial thought is that if we are going to consider an app, which it sounds like we're going to, that we may hold on the, I need to, let's review for city attorney and police to make sure we would actually not need to do the moving vehicle change, the code, if we did an app for enforcement instead. But otherwise, we'll come back to if the citation fee increase and the sunsetting of the town center commuter parking permit, probably sooner. We'll take some time to get a, do some little more analysis and come up with a recommendation, including potential pricing amount for extended parking for the additional two hours for the later time.
Can we get the city attorney or this ordinance, this drafting, to consider Councilmember Reynolds' idea of this graduated repeat offense-type fine? You know, if any other jurisdiction will graduate their fines based on the frequency or the number of parking citations for a single license plate?
Yeah, I'll, staff will look into it for city attorney.
Okay.
Question?
Councilmember Weinberg.
Yeah, do we want, in the interest of trying to ease the community into this change? Because they've had something that certain spaces have been free, and certain spaces have not, or there's places where it hasn't been rigidly enforced, and we're talking about increasing the fines and increasing enforcement. I'm wondering if there's a way that we could ease the community into this, such as having the funds collected from the fees go into a parking benefit district that would benefit the cleaning of the sidewalks, cleaning of the curbs, better street lighting, and other things that directly benefit the people that are paying more for the parking that they're using.
Okay. I mean, I think City of Baltimore Manager Bond has her hand up.
I was actually going to respond to the first part of where I thought you were going, Councilmember Weinberg. When these ordinances or ordinance comes back, we will likely recommend adopting with a long implementation lead time. Because what's going to happen is, as we set new regulations, it's going to take us months to implement. We have signage, we have an app vendor to bring on, we have coordination with PD. So just know that there's, you know, upon adoption, we're going to have to set sometime in the future when it becomes effective. That's a really important window for communications as well, when we start rolling out what the new regulations are and notifying people, hey, this is coming. I would not recommend tying your ordinance to the creation of a benefit district. I would just keep those actions separate. But if the council, and the council will need to direct, if we end up being, moving towards a fee-based system, which it sounds like you wanted to consider tonight, you will then need to provide financial direction on where those resources go. But I would keep those actions separate.
Okay. Okay. Anything else, staff? No? All right, well, I can assure you, there's going to be a postmortem on this agenda bill. Clearly a failure of leadership on my part. This is not going to happen again. I bring such a free-form, push-the-string exercise to the council. So don't expect any more of these. All right, we now move to other business in the planning schedule. We welcome City Manager Jesse Bond.
Hey, it's one executive session standing ahead of us going to an August recess. So I will just point out, we have an incredibly busy fall with a comprehensive plan review and biennial budget work.
Okay. Thank you for that. Councilmember, any absences upcoming other than August? No? Councilmember Jacobson?
September 3rd.
Oh, okay.
I'll be in Africa, and I, whether or not I'll be in someplace where I can zoom in here or change here, I have no idea.
Microphone, please.
All right. Councilmember reports, Deputy Mayor Rosamont, anything to report?
Tended to schedule some parking meetings in lieu of our August recess. I don't have anything to report.
Okay, I have nothing to report. Councilor Wyker?
No.
Weinberg?
No.
Reynolds?
Just note that I did attend the Eastside Transportation Partnership meeting a couple of days ago, and it was a, the entire meeting, or the vast majority of it, was devoted to considering shuttle options and last-mile solutions. And they presented several different options, most notably the Bellhop program in Bellevue, which is an on-demand call for a free ride and electric shuttle around town from point-to-point transit. And it was a very impressive program, substantially less costly than I would have anticipated. And I think it's, would be worthwhile for the council to consider exploring other options similar to that, if not that itself, in the future. In particular, if we proceed with our plan to upzone the commercial office property to allow multifamily housing in that area. We're going to have an area with multifamily housing, and perhaps a fair amount of low-income housing with no access to transit. And that's, this is one option that's going to be available to address that that I look forward to discussing in the future.
Thank you. Councilmember Enrol.
Nothing to report.
Jacobson?
Nothing.
Okay. The next hybrid meeting of the city council is scheduled for Tuesday, September 3rd at 5:00 p.m. The time is now 8:39 p.m. The city council will go into executive session for approximately 60 minutes. One, for planning or adopting the strategy or position to be taken by the city council during a course of any collective bargaining, professional negotiations, or grievance or mediation proceedings, or reviewing the proposals made of the negotiations or proceedings while in progress pursuant to RCW 42.30.1404B2B. Two, to consider a selection of a site of acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101B. And three, to discuss with legal counsel pending or potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101I. No action will be taken following the executive session. Please stay seated until the city staff is terminated the broadcast. Good evening, and thank you for joining us tonight.